It is May 16, 2022. It is after 5:30 p.m. start time. So good late afternoon and welcome. We will open with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a very brief invocation. Please rise, put your hand over your heart, stand straight and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Our God and God of our ancestors, we ask your blessing for our country, the Commonwealth, this town, and for the world, for the governments, for their leaders and advisors, and for all who exercise just and rightful authority. Our Creator bless us all with your Spirit. May Rockport continue to be a model of good, fair, and effective government throughout the land. Let us demonstrate this model this evening, and let us say amen. We're having a brief swearing-in ceremony. Mr. Peter Cutner and Tom Mekus, please go to the podium. And your new town clerk will swear you in.
You're going to swear me in?
I swear.
But first, our new town clerk is going to be sworn in by our departing town clerk.
Do you, Melanie Wadell, promise, promise to do your job as town clerk, faithfully and impartially to the best of your knowledge and ability, and follow the bylaws of the town of Rockport, the laws of the Commonwealth, and the Constitution of the United States? I do. Congratulations.
a moderator often needs a deputy moderator for many reasons, most of which you understand. And so I am going to move that Pat Brown be appointed deputy moderator for this meeting. And that was seconded by Melanie in her first act. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. That motion carries unanimously. Our new town clerk will now read the officer's return on the warrant.
I'm Michael Foot, Constable of the town of Rockport, have on this date, April 29, 2022, posted special town meeting warrant for the special town meeting to be held Monday, May 16, 2022, at 5:30 p.m. at the Rockport High School in the two post offices, the town bulletin board, and 17 other public places throughout town, including three in Precinct 1, three in Precinct 2, and three in Precinct 3. Signed, Michael Foot, Constable of the town of Rockport. Received 2:30 p.m., April 29, 2022, at the Rockport Clerk's Office. Signed, Patricia E. Brown, Town Clerk.
Thank you. And Pat, I'll now ask you to stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will perform your duties as Assistant Town Moderator faithfully and impartially to the best of your knowledge and ability, and follow the rules, regulations, and bylaws of the town of Rockport, the rules, regulations, and laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and abide by the rules, regulations, and Constitution of the United States?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, this meeting will be conducted in accordance with parliamentary procedure as described in Chapter 2 of our town bylaws. And Amy Quessel, our town council, is seated to my left, and she can assist if there are any questions regarding that or any other bylaw that we're going to consider this evening. All the articles this evening are related. We are going to go in order. We have a lot of faces here. Maybe some of you have not been here before, but the subject of discussion will always be a pending motion and not the warrant article itself. The Planning Board Chairman Jason Shaw will be our main town committee presenting today. The zoning board will have some involvement here as well. If you wish to speak, first get my attention, or Melanie, or Pat's attention, by raising your hand and line up behind the microphone or come to the podium. We will attempt to sanitize the microphones between uses, I believe. After you have the microphone and have been recognized, please give us your name and address, and then you may speak. Remember, we do not engage in discussions and conversations, however awkward that may seem, but we have a lot of people who may want to participate. And you have one question, we move on to the next person. And the bylaw provides that the moderator should give preference to people who have not spoken on an issue before calling on someone a second and third time. I try to extend that rule to different articles as well. When I sense you are ready to vote, I'll state the question, either paraphrasing a pending motion. After that time, you can only be recognized just if you have any doubts on what the issue is or what a vote means. Once the voting has begun, any discussion is out of order. And just a word about moving the question. It's not really appropriate to just shout that. You have to be recognized and you move the question. And I need not say this all the time, but in other parts of the world, we have concerns about civility. Remember, personal attacks will equal the last time you'll be recognized to speak. I want, and I appreciate the passion that everybody brings to this, but I want that energy to be focused in a positive way. Remember, we are guests of the school department today. Smoking is not permitted on the grounds at all, or really anywhere on earth anymore. Please observe this rule. I think we are ready to proceed.
Article A, Mr. Moderator, Board of Health Chair Ron Newman moves that Article A be approved as printed in the May 16, 2022 special town meeting warrant. Board of Selectmen supports this article.
Okay, moved and seconded. And I believe this relates to a COVID-induced inability to get the products from the market, so just one more way in which COVID has disrupted our lives. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
No.
All right, that motion carries. We move on to Article B.
Anything? There we go. Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article B be approved as printed in the May 16, 2022 special town meeting warrant, except that the revisions to the town of Rockport zoning bylaw, Article 5, subsection B1, line E on page 22, be deleted, and further, that the town clerk be authorized to make any and all ministerial changes, including but not limited to grammar, punctuation, and corrections to the codification and numbering to ensure correctness. Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Board of Appeals supports this article.
Okay, now, the rest of our evening is going to be devoted to Articles B, C, D, and E, and they all relate to the wholesale changes of the entire code of our zoning bylaws. You will be able to discuss all of these in the context that they're all kind of related, but we are going to vote on them one at a time because they are very big chunks, and we have done the best we can to bifurcate these so that they make logical sense. So as the evening unfolds, I think that will make more sense to all of you, but without any further ado, I will call Mr. Jason Shaw to make his presentation. This is the most complex thing we've done in my 16 years, and so he will get more than his 10 minutes.
Well, I'm glad I got my Dale Carnegie Public Speaking Certificate yesterday because I haven't been up in front of a group of this size in a long, long time. So my name is Jason Shaw, S-H-A-W. I live in the town of Rockport, and I'm going to start just with some opening remarks to, because I don't know what everyone out there knows. Some people know a lot about how the town government works, and other people don't know a whole lot. So very quickly, I'll go through this. First of all, what is the planning board? The planning board does planning for the town and issues certain approvals for the town. There are currently four members of the planning board, but usually five members. They're all elected officials. In fact, two of them were on the ballot last week and were reelected to the planning board. What is our compensation for doing what we do? Zero. We're volunteers, like a lot of people in this town. Denise Donnelly, who is now sitting at the Board of Selectmen table, was until just last week a member of our board, but she's just been elected to the Board of Selectmen, so she's sitting over there. But she will still be involved with this presentation on the planning board because she was very much involved with all of these proposed bylaws when they were being reviewed and considered. Just very quickly, who's on our board, and this is no particular order. Peter Cutner, who's a practicing architect in Cambridge, his experience, he's a new member, his experience has been invaluable. Tom Mekus, he's a retired engineer, he has a lot of technical knowledge. Harry Korsland, he's a commercial banker with the Community Bank in Haverhill. And finally Denise Donnelly, who's a retired employee benefits consultant. Oh yeah, I said finally, actually, there's me. I'm a retired attorney, and we all are residents of Rockport. And in addition to the planning board, we all have other duties and volunteer work. One member of our board is on the Community Preservation Committee, a volunteer at the thrift store Second Glance. Another is on the Long Beach Options Committee. Another is an EMT and a member of the Rockport Volunteer Ambulance Squad. We all get along very well, and we all can agree to disagree, which I know these days in politics is something you don't hear very much. Not one of us derives any personal benefit beyond the benefit to the public as a whole from what we are doing on the planning board and what we are doing tonight. None of us is a local contractor, developer, or landowner, or other professional who would benefit from any other proposed changes that we are proposing tonight. We have also been assisted immensely on this zoning revision project by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, or MAPC. MAPC is a regional planning agency that serves 101 cities and towns of our region. It is a public agency created by the Commonwealth and governed by representatives in each city and town in the region. The staff at MAPC knows town zoning and what are current and best practices in zoning. Rockport is fortunate to have hired them to assist the planning board because we could not have done this without them. We have one of the MAPC planners, Chris Kushel, who's sitting at the table in the blue jacket, and he's here today to assist us in answering any questions. Couple of other points to consider while you hear the back and forth on these zoning provisions. We at the planning board consider these proposed amendments the beginning of a continuing process. This is not the be-all and end-all. As Chris Kushel has reminded us, a zoning bylaw is a living document. Some people may say, well, why didn't you change this? Or why didn't you do that? Or why is this provision different from this provision? And we acknowledge that despite all that we've done, there is still more to be done. And in fact, there are some things that still need to be changed. Are they perfect? No. But there are some housekeeping amendments that we're going to have to do here to reorganize some of the things, because as you can see, we have over 166 pages, about 166 pages. It's a lot to keep in line. Every change in this zoning bylaw was reviewed by planning board members. Some changes that were suggested by MAPC were rejected by the planning board. Others were accepted with modifications. We worked with the building inspector and got him involved in reviewing what we proposed. We had two days of public hearings last January that were advertised in the Gloucester Daily Times, noticed by posting in the town hall and on the planning board website. Members of the public attended and had excellent suggestions, almost all of which have been incorporated into the bylaws. And other members didn't attend but submitted written proposals. So that's pretty much just to give you an outline of what we've done here and why we've done it. And I think, let me ask the Mr. Moderator, do we have to do anything with these amendments at this point that we've been talking about?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Well, why don't we start with...
Start with our PowerPoint that Melanie, our clerk, is going to be flicking through here. Just quickly, local law bylaws that govern how property can and cannot be used, that's what zoning is. It affects future changes of land. Zoning bylaw cannot change a use that's in existence now and it's different. Zoning only affects prospective or future changes. So for example, we have one of the changes we have is to accessory dwelling units, and that affects how they could be used or not used for like Airbnb. That would not affect an accessory dwelling unit that's being used now for rental. We can't do that. That's not the zoning, that's not the planning board's job. That has to be done by a general amendment to the general bylaws. It's not, we can't do that. We can only affect things going forward. And we only come into play if a property owner wishes to make a change. If a property owner has a use and doesn't want to change it, and the zoning is different, that property owner continues to be able to use their property in that very same way. And the rest of it, I think I've already said. Why don't we go to the next slide, Melanie? Okay. So what did we do here with these kind of overwhelming changes? First of all, let's talk about, I call them the nuts and bolts changes. We changed outdated language and inconsistent provisions, and there were plenty of them in the zoning bylaw, because this bylaw has been changed piecemeal for decades. And some people would change one thing, but then they'd forget to change, a board would forget to change something else in another section that referred to that. So, or they'd have a definition that doesn't exist anywhere in the body of the bylaw. We saw that plenty of times. So we also changed the accessory dwelling unit provisions. These are the dwelling units like in a barn or over a garage or something like that. We also changed that, again, going forward. And Denise Donnelly was very involved with that, and she's going to be the one who'll be telling you exactly what those proposed changes are. The other thing we did, we changed, we created what's called an overlay zoning district in 12.3 acres around the train station. And I'll talk, we'll talk about that more later, but basically that is to follow the lead that the Baker Administration has made to try to provide more housing stock in towns like Rockport. Affordable housing for multifamily, for people who can afford to live here and can't pay, right now can't pay either the rents or certainly the prices for what housing is. I'll talk about that later. And we don't change any existing zoning provisions relating to Dogtown or marijuana. That somehow it's come up, and it's not true. We don't change anything related to that. And the other thing is, we don't change, we have not changed anything that has not been fully disclosed and discussed at a public meeting and the subject of public hearing. So rest assured, that has not happened. And before I go any further, Mr. Moderator, can I move the flag that's over there just behind the... Much better. Thank you. So as I said here, long overdue modernization and cleanup of the zoning bylaws that have been adopted piecemeal over the decades. The median price of a single-family home in Rockport, last year, hit $802,000, median price. Everyone has stories now about, can you believe that that house sold for seven figures? I mean, we all know that now. We all see that. Because Rockport, people say, oh, I don't want Rockport to change. Rockport is changing. If we do zero, nothing, Rockport is changing. And this is how it's changing. Housing is just getting incredibly expensive, rentals are hard to find, and the ones that you find, you might not want to live in. This is unattainable by most families, and many of the changes that we have, the bigger changes that we have in the zoning law here are our attempt to comply with the goals set by the Massachusetts Housing Choice Act. What we want to try to do is to create more housing, market rate, affordable housing for families with children and for older people who want to downsize. Next slide, please. Okay. Nuts and bolts, these are the, what we call the nuts and bolts warrant articles. These are the articles that, like I said, misplaced definitions, tweaking language that may be obscure or it's obsolete, things like that. I'll just go through this quickly. I know this isn't all that exciting, but it is important. As you can see, we reordered sections, moving definitions, we added side tabs for the sections, we gave the zoning bylaw consistent numbering and spacing, we use consistent abbreviations, and we simplified the language and eliminated archaic language such as boarding houses and cottage colonies. How quaint, but I haven't seen a cottage colony in Rockport recently. So we also removed unnecessary definitions that are not in the bylaw. In other words, you'll have a definition, but nothing in the body of the bylaw that refers to the definition. But there's a nice definition, but doesn't refer to anything. We added definitions for new sections. We modified existing definitions to update them, and we consolidated definitions. Next slide. Thank you. Here are some more significant things that we did. We removed a section of retail and commercial use provisions from Section 6 of our, this would be still on Article B, that are covered by the State Building Code. They're not zoning. Talking about the number of bathrooms that you need to have for a square footage is not a zoning provision. That's a building code provision. And I don't know how they ended up there. Maybe there's a history to them, but we've taken them out because we let someone like Paul Orlando deal with that when he does building inspections. It's not our purview. We removed non-residential lighting zoning provisions of Section 8 to have it be included with residential lighting provisions in the general bylaw. Why did we do that? Because the residential lighting provision applies no matter whether it's an existing house or not. In other words, if someone's got a light that's shining brightly out all night and doesn't have a shield on it and doesn't have the right kind of bulb, that light is technically in violation of the Rockport bylaw, but it's not a zoning law, it's a general bylaw. We wanted to do the same thing with the non-residential, meaning commercial lighting, wanted to go in the same section. So it's not a zoning issue, it's a general bylaw issue. And finally, we removed obsolete sections such as Section 8, which concerns microwave antennas, which I don't believe anybody has any of those anymore. It's kind of like the bag cellphone in our family. Remember those, where you carried a bag around with the cellphone with it? So we also revised and clarified the definition of the gross floor area in Section 2 and included a diagram illustration. And Peter Cutner, our architect member of the board, was very helpful in putting this together. That provision, which gross floor area is how you measure the size of a house, and based on the size of the house, you may have to get a special permit to build the house. So how do you calculate the size? Well, that's the gross floor area, and we revised that definition to make it more understandable so people can understand it, read it, and have a diagram so people can actually see a picture of it to see what it shows. We added other dimensional standards to clarify how you determine what the existing grade is on a property and how a half-story on a building is defined and calculated. I can keep on going, and I will. Okay. So here's some of the other things we did. Section 6B, we updated the minimum lot size in our district to make two-family lot size consistent with single-family. In other words, this is part of the idea to allow for maybe more housing in the town of Rockport. Same lot size, same setbacks, same height requirements. The only difference is that it allows for two-family instead of just one family. That's the only difference, and we'll show that, we have a diagram coming up to illustrate that. We allowed updated Table 5B to allow mixed-use buildings in the downtown zoning district, meaning shops below, apartments above. Updated Table 5B, Table of Uses, to allow townhomes and small multiple dwellings with a maximum of four units by special permit only. a maximum of four units by special permit only in residential R districts. And the rationale is the R district is the one that's within the walking distance of the train station, making it best suitable for additional housing options. Now, that's, what this means is, this is allowing this, or could allow this to happen. It doesn't mean it's gonna happen, it means it's allowing it to happen as a housing option. And here's an example of what I was talking about. Two, 10,000 square feet, single-family, 30-foot height, 20-foot front yard setback, 25-foot side yard setback. Two-family, 30-foot height, same height, 20-foot front yard setback, 25-foot side yard setback. Exactly the same. All right, we can go to the next one. The parking requirements. We revised the parking requirements and put them in an easy-to-read table in Section 7A, rather than what they were, was a long narrative form, which was difficult to read and difficult to understand. And the new parking allows for a concept, which is, you know, newer concept, which is shared parking. You don't have to have parking for everybody all the time. If a parking lot is shared by commercial and residential, the residential parking may not be needed to the extent during the day that the commercial parking is. So we can have those parking spaces be shared by the residential users and the commercial users. And the upshot of that is, fewer parking spaces, fewer paved-over parking lots, because we have, it's a concept of shared parking. These are, again, these are very general outlines, I'm just kind of trying to tell you some of the concepts that are in the new zoning. And then finally, the authority to waive the parking requirements is shared by the Zoning Board of Appeals and by the Planning Board, depending on the number of parking spots. Five or fewer, it's the Zoning Board of Appeals, six or more, it's the Planning Board. We can go to the next slide. And this is, this is very important for our building inspector, Paul Orlando, because we created in Section 15, a procedure for building, the building inspector to enforce zoning violations based on written complaints. Believe it or not, that wasn't in the zoning before. The second thing we did, we established civil fines of $300 a day for continuing zoning violations. The existing law had criminal penalties. Well, we're not going to send, I don't think the town's going to send someone to jail for a zoning violation. So, we, realistically, we eliminated the criminal penalties, and we went to a civil fine of $300. Okay. Next item. And I think I'm going to step back. Denise, do you want to talk about accessory dwelling units at this point? I'm sorry. As you can imagine, managing this is a challenge. So one of the things that we had to decide is, do we keep on going and go through all the changes, and then have everyone comment on what we've changed, or else stop at each article, and let comments happen, and then move on to the next article? That's what that was all about. So the consensus was, we stop at Article B, which is what I just described, we take comments, and then, when it seems like those comments are done, by about 11 to, no, when it seems like they're done, we'll move on to, you know, Article C, Article D, and then Article E. Okay? So, that's, do you need me to? Sorry for the delay and sorry for the confusion. Even though we did, we did talk about, we did talk about this prior to the meeting to try to avoid it, but one thing that has been done, and we haven't gotten to accessory dwelling units yet, which is warrant Article C. And we're not going to get to them before we finish with Article B. Okay? That's, that we've already talked about. However, the, on page 22, of your, of, this would be Article B, page 22, it's, it's on, it's under the heading principal, it's under the Table of Permitted Uses, and there's a, there's an E there, if you see, within that table, there's an E which says, everyone following me? Okay, good. One accessory dwelling unit per lot, and then it, and then it has a deleted portion, provided the minimum lot area required in the, and then it stops. What happened there was that the box didn't expand enough to include all of the language that's proposed to be deleted. So, I'll read it to you. Because what it is, it's the current language that's in the bylaw that we're proposing to delete and substitute, basically what you see in Article E. And what we're deleting is, provided the minimum lot area required in the zoning district where the lot is located, is provided for each dwelling on the lot, and the, and the permit as of right, one accessory dwelling unit per lot in the RAR, SMR, GD zoning districts. So in other words, what this currently says is that each, with an accessory dwelling unit, we haven't gotten to this yet, but each, each unit, the accessory and the main dwelling, both have to have the minimum lot size for the district. That's what that says. That's being, we're proposing that that be deleted from E, okay? And this is very technical, and that E is now going to be moved from Article B, where it is now, to Article C, which has to do with accessory dwelling units. That's, that's all that is. It's, it's, everyone understand that, I'm sure. No, no, we're not, I'm just telling you what's, it's already been done, I'm just explaining it to you. It's not a motion to be voted on. So, but that, that's one thing that's being done. And the other thing that we did in, in your copy of the, of the bylaw, is on page 66, everyone goes to that, there's a section, it says E, Other Regulations, and it's Item 4 in Section E. And it reads, "Provide that all new construction within Zone VE be located landward," and it should say, "of the coastal banks." Not on the coastal banks. And that's another change that's being made. These are just, these are technical changes, I'm sorry we have to go through these, I know it's confusing, but to move these, to move this Article E to, to move Section E out of Article B and to put it in Section C is something we have to do. And that's what, I believe we've, we're good? Okay. Our town council says we're good. So that's, that's all that that's about. I'm sorry about the confusion. These things do happen, you know? Thank you.
The document of this size to only have two technical corrections is pretty good. We are now going to hear from the Zoning Board of Appeals. I believe it'll be Alan Battistelli.
Alan Battistelli, 57 Phillips Avenue, Chairman of the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals would like to congratulate the Planning Board on the amount of work they put in this year. They did a heck of a lot of work. No one's ever tried to rewrite the whole bylaw in one, in one year, and we'll see tonight how that all goes. But anyways, for this particular section, I'm going to, we're going to speak later on, Article C, from the Board of Appeals, we've taken action on that one, and that's included in your packet, a letter. But on Article B, the Board of Appeals would like to make a motion that the definitions of accessory dwelling units be moved from Article B to Article C.
Page, page and number for, page and definition of?
Yeah, we're trying to get that page and number, a second, a second. It's in the definitions, and it's accessory dwelling units because...
So the, the...
Page three.
The accessory dwelling units are on page two presently in the definition, and if I understand this, Alan, you want to move them to Article C here, which starts on page 126.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's the motion we want to...
Okay. It is a motion to amend. And we have a question back there? You're going to have to walk to a microphone.
Additional booklets have arrived from the printer, they've been autographed, and
you can also obtain them by going online and looking in the town meeting portion of our town website.
Thank you, Kathleen Cahill. That was my point, is that a lot of us didn't have those, and those of us in the cheap seats can't see the boards, so I will get a booklet, thank you.
All right, an announcement from our Assistant Town Moderator, Deputy Town Moderator, that said that you can be comfortable and go in the cafeteria, there are loudspeakers there, but there's no provision to vote in there. So when it comes time to vote on something, you'd have to go back, there are screens. Popcorn?
No popcorn.
No popcorn.
But it's comfortable in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Is that live? Yeah, I got, yeah, okay, it's live. Okay, the reason that the Board of Appeals was trying to do this is making the motion to take that definition and move it to Article, to Article C, is that, so that if, if Article C ends up later on being sent off for further study, then we would be working during the course of that period of time under the existing definitions, so there'd be no change. Okay? So that's, that's why, the reason we're making that motion, to add that in the parts that got slid over along with the table.
Alan, do you want to make that motion conditional upon Article C passing? If Article C isn't considered or passed, then we won't have a definition anymore.
Right, okay. So, that's exactly clear, right? So I'd have to, yes, okay, the answer to that is yes. We want, we, the Board, we want...
Our town council is indicating something different.
So, the motion, I'm sorry, Amy Quessell, KP Law, Town Council, through you, Mr. Moderator. The motion to amend is to delete any revisions to the definition of accessory dwelling.
Right.
So it is not contingent upon C passing or not?
Right, any revisions.
It's not, any revisions, we're not deleting the entire definition, we're just deleting proposed revisions. That, that is what the intent of your amendment is, correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
I don't, I'm outside.
Moved and seconded, all right. Now we are just going to discuss whether or not to change that definition of accessory dwelling units. And gentlemen in the back?
Yes, thank you. Dan Waters, Eden Road. Can I ask Jason Shaw what his view and his, the planning board's view is of that change? Can I ask Jason Shaw what his view and his, the Planning Board's view is of that change?
Sir, I'm going to ask you to state that again, we're trying to.
Sorry, probably the mask isn't helping. I don't purport to understand the impact of what has been said, but I would like to know what Jason Shaw and the Planning Board think of that change, please?
Anyone from the Planning Board want to discuss that change?
The reason we changed it, there are two reasons. First of all, separate and apart from Article C, which has to do with accessory dwelling units, this definition, which is in the definition section, which is appropriate, it says, it defines it as any other dwelling existing on a given lot in excess of one dwelling. That's what the current language says now, any other dwelling existing on a given lot in excess of one dwelling. That's the way it reads now. That has been, the Planning Board deleted that, because it doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. Any other dwelling, you meaning multiple family dwellings? It, the, the current, the language that's in the current definition of accessory dwelling unit doesn't make sense. That's why it was deleted. What we did put, what we did add to that was a second dwelling unit subordinate in size to the principal dwelling unit, okay? Meaning a second unit that's smaller, subordinate in size to the principal dwelling, like an apartment over a garage is subordinate to the principal dwelling. Okay? That is a classic definition of an accessory dwelling or an accessory use. Locate, and then we say located on a lot, either in the principal dwelling or an accessory structure. So, in other words, the definition of an accessory dwelling means that it can be a dwelling attached to the principal dwelling, like a mother-in-law apartment that's attached, or it can be separate, a separate building on the lot, like over a detached garage, either one or the other. That's why the definition was changed, because the current definition, which has the line through it, any other dwelling existing on a given lot in excess of one dwelling could mean a multifamily dwelling. It doesn't have to be subordinate, any other dwelling. So, we attempted to clarify that in general, forget Article C, it needed to be clarified, and that's what we attempted to do, and that's why we made that amendment. And it really doesn't depend on whether Article C is adopted by you folks or not, this is a, this is an appropriate definition in our view to replace a defective definition that's there now. That's our position.
All right, before we open it up to the public, let's hear back from the Zoning Board.
Alan Battistelli, 57 Phillips Avenue. Okay, the, in the definition, the existing definition, it's a second house on the lot. I think it's pretty, it's pretty clear, we've been, we've been practicing this, I've been on that board for 26 years, we've never had any confusion at all what it is, and it's an extra house on your lot. We, at the Board of Appeals, you get all kinds of applications, and we have, there's a lot of different houses, and there's different zones in this town, there's big, there's, there's downtown, but then there's, there's the strange, this is where we get into, I don't want to get so too far into Article C. All I can say right now is that it, this size part that's dictated here, you can get a house that is a sizable home, okay? And the person's getting older or such, and they, they say, well, you know, you know, we have so much land here, why don't we build a little accessory dwelling? Go to the Board of Appeals, see if you can get a special permit to build a special, to build a accessory dwelling, we'll live in the small house, and maybe we'll rent the other house out, okay? And the, for $300, you, you come and you ask, and we hold a public hearing, and we see if you, you're okay or not. This size element that's created in the new definition, the reason the Board of Appeals wants to move that to, to, out, out and bring back the old definition at this stage, is because that's one of the, one of the many conditions, there's a lot of conditions in section C, and many, many of them that, that, the Board of Appeals later on tonight will be, we'll only go into some of them, we're not going to, we're not going to go into all of this, this is too much. But we're going to, we're going to talk about, size is one of the things we have a problem with, and that's one of the things mentioned here. So, if the older couple wants their, or the, whatever, a young couple, they want to go live in the little cottage on the yard and rent out the big house, if they have so much land and they're, and it's appropriate for the neighborhood, at the end of, of the process of public hearings, that may get approved, it may get denied. It's, so, but the, the process that we're doing tonight, right now, they're, they're taking some of the rules, and that's size thing is one of the rules that the Board of Appeals doesn't agree with, because we have so many districts, we have little houses downtown, you, it, this is, there's a whole thing on size, and I'd rather go into it later, but if you, one size fits all is not going to work for the town of Rockport. You have little houses, a great, but 900 square feet is what's laid out in this bylaw, if people have read the new bylaw, and, and that they're talking, and 900 square feet, that might be too big. We've just recently rented, we just recently approved a couple of accessory dwelling units right downtown, and they were much smaller than that. And they were appropriate in a lot, in their little size, even smaller, this, if you go down to some places, we get applications in front of us, when, where people have acreage, they have three, four, five acres, and they want to build a house on their lot. That house, I, I certainly, and do not want to hold a handicap anybody to build a house that's bigger than their house on this lot. It may not even be visible from the house that, that is the primary dwelling. Let the market figure this out. This is why the Board of Appeals does not want, and, at this, this definition without Article C passing. If Article C passes, we're fine with that, but if Article C does not pass, we, we want to have the existing definition of an accessory dwelling carry forward until a future date. That's all, that's all we're asking for.
Just a few comments before we hear from. Dr. Lilia from the Board of Selectment. I've asked both Jason and Alan to keep their comments as, as quickly as, as, as short as possible, because we're not going to have this known as the Woodstock meeting.
Good evening. We have gone on quite at length with regard to this, I'd like to try to simplify the process. So, what I'm suggesting is that the Planning Board withdraw the change in the definition to the accessory dwelling unit at this time. We vote on the changes to the definitions with that reversal, and then after B has been passed, if you will, and we go to C, and if C is passed, we can go back to B and change the definition. But for the moment, just leave it alone, because the Zoning Board of Appeals would like that definition carried forward, in case there is a further delay or a delay in the decision with regard to Article C. I understand that, I think you do too, but for the moment, if we could, we could just move on by leaving the definition for the accessory dwelling as is, not changed. That's my option.
Through a special emissary, I was told that that is acceptable to the Planning Board, and so we won't amend this, and we can move on to further discussion of this article, and when we get to it, if we get to it, we get to it, and that's acceptable to all parties. Okay?
Hi, Heath Ritchie, One Woodbury Hill. That's totally unacceptable. Just kidding. But I want to be clear, when you talk about the definition, are we also talking about the table of permitted uses? Because if we, if we're only talking about holding back the definition of accessory dwelling, dwelling unit, we'd end up in a situation where the old definition is allowed by right, which I don't think is what you want. On page 22.
Can you speak right into the microphone? I didn't catch any of that.
Hilarious. I just want to clarify whether all the discussion about the definition also applies to principal permitted uses in structures, section E.
That, we have removed that also, from discussion.
Well, that's not what it says here, so, just want to be clear. Thanks. I don't want to end up in a situation where the old definition is allowed by right.
Yep. So, it was discovered fairly late in this, that Article C, which is going to talk about accessory dwelling units, had a couple of little areas where it was discussed on this 125 pages worth of Article B, and when we introduced this topic, we said that that table dealing with dwelling units in the table of uses is not going to be changed at this point until we discuss Article C, in which case it will change in some way, and there may be a lot of different ways it will change. And then it was discovered a few moments ago that the definition of accessory dwelling unit had some potential for mischief, and so there was a, a motion made to amend it, and based on a good faith gesture of the Planning Board, that motion to amend it has been pulled back, so we're leaving it for the moment, realizing that logically speaking, if Article C changes, it's going to change some things in Article B, and just like when we talk about the budget in the spring, if it changes some things, we'll take a few minutes and we'll readjust and recalculate.
Did Mr. Battistelli withdraw his?
Yes, he did.
So, that means the change will be made.
It was an agreement that, the motion, the motion was not necessary to adapt the whole law, whether it's by review of the Planning Board.
I, I think that the agreement was that the Planning Board was going to not make a change to accessory dwelling unit until such time as we talk about Article C.
So, you have to get it right.
Okay?
That's not right. That's not right. That's not what's going to happen.
Okay.
So, the main motion, do you want me to do it to everybody? The main motion changed the table of uses, that's out.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
He made a motion to amend, to take away all of the changes to the definition.
So, that's one def, change, yep.
For that one definition.
Yep.
That motion is on the floor.
Right.
That needs to be voted on.
Okay.
If they, if he, if he withdraws his motion, the Planning Board has to make the motion, somebody has to make the motion to amend.
All right, I'll ask, I'll ask him to make the motion.
We don't need to.
I'll ask Jason to make the motion.
We don't need to, because Alan made it, and the Planning Board is okay with it.
No, the Planning Board was, was okay with her.
I know.
I guess replication of any change to that definition.
Right, and that's what, that's what he.
So, you want to make a motion there?
So, that's what he did. So, Alan's, Alan's motion to amend revoked any changes to.
Point of order.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Moderator?
So, you don't want any changes right now? Okay.
So, withdraw your motion to amend?
Yeah.
It's not going to work?
Well.
We just have this on the screen.
You told me that.
Okay.
What's that?
The original motion is on the screen.
Okay.
The original motion is on.
Okay.
And that's still.
All right, so here's what happened.
Mr. Moderator?
Here's what happened regarding this accessory dwelling unit. There was a motion to amend it, essentially bringing it back to the original definition, and we were going to have to talk about that for a great deal of time, but realizing that that change is going to happen when we get to Article C, Mr. Battistelli withdrew his motion, and at the same time, Mr. Shaw agreed not to make any changes to accessory dwelling units and leave that section as it was, essentially amending his motion to, with, to return that language to the original language and not deal with that definition until we get to Article C, in which case we may have this discussion and talk about it for another hour or two. Everybody understand that? Okay. Now, let's talk about the article, Article B, which is 125 pages, it goes from page one through page 125, and it will require a two-thirds vote to pass. The other ones, under the new state law, are by majority vote, C, D, and E. Okay. Now, Mr. Arsenian.
Mr. Moderator, question?
Let's wait for Mr. Arsenian, and then, hold your questions, they may become self-evident.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Actually, although the Planning Board and the Board of Appeals are momentarily at a truce, I don't think that was a satisfactory solution, because the additional dwelling units come with all sorts of baggage and conditions, like genetically modified animals that they are, that do not apply to additional dwelling units on lots of whatever size, but that's not a helpful comment. I drew up a number of motions, and I'm sure I'll be hated, but with 160 pages, you know, painful it is as it is, it might be worth looking at some of it. I moved to restore all of the notations of when changes were made to the zoning code. If you go through the, the change, the, the proposed zoning code, you'll see in places that there are marks when things were changed, what town meeting, and the Planning Board has merely decided for no good reason to sweep all of those away. Whatever changes we come up with tonight won't be the final version of the zoning code. Jason Shaw referred to it as a work in progress, and if either a later Planning Board or any of you with citizen petitions decide you might like to change any particular aspect of it, those notations as to when things were changed are useful. That's the index of a book, so that you could go back into the town clerk's records and discover, you know, what was said at that town meeting, why those changes were made. So, it's a minor point, but worth saving those things. I moved to restore all of the notations of when changes were made to the zoning code. I hope we could agree on that, that's harmless, and then I have a whole series of other amendments, and you can curse me, but they're worth hearing.
Thank you, Toby. Let's talk about that. Moved, yeah, what's seconded? Anyone want to discuss? Yes, sir?
I'll tell you on the back.
All right, we'll get the gentleman in the back in a moment.
It's Bill Johnson. As Toby said, that's, this is a minor point. We removed the dates because according to, according to MIPC and generally accepted practice, that there aren't dates beside every single time that there's an amendment to a provision in the zoning law, there isn't a date that follows it. Amendments to zoning laws can be discovered in all different ways, that's why we removed it, but frankly, it's, it's not a big point. We wanted to clean up the language, clean up the page, make it more easily readable, and that's why it was done. It doesn't affect the substance of any of the changes that we've made, so, that's, that's why it was done.
Mr. Shaw, will there be a preface that will say when the changes were made in one place? Will there be any place in the preface of this document that will say when these changes were made? Will they exist anywhere?
Yeah, we, we could certainly include a history of the changes, especially these latest ones that were made now, but don't forget, there've been multiple changes to some of these provisions over the years, so you have multiple different dates following these provisions. That's why we removed them from the body, they're actually in the body of the document. It's unusual. It's unusual, but that's the way it's been done. We tried to bring it up to what is kind of a standard practice now with zoning codes. That's why it was done. As I said, it doesn't, doesn't affect the changes, it doesn't affect the provisions at all.
Okay, there was a gentleman in back in red who wanted to speak, and then gentleman up here who wants to speak.
Mr. Moderator, just a couple of points. Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. When you go to sidebar, I guess that's what you'd call it, when you have three or four attorneys standing up there, could, included in that conversation, town meeting is intended to be participation government, and you have to come back and explain it anyhow. So, in the past, I remember the moderator, town council, and department heads would have to speak to the, to the audience through a microphone as well as we do so that we could hear as people are going along. The other thing I'd like is the three, the four articles that are here, of course, are all, say the same thing in the, in the agenda, but could you give us just what's going to happen in B? Is B the one that everyone is here for? Is C strictly on accessory dwellings? Is D on the change in the spacing for cars or whatever? What's the general thing that you accomplish in each of these articles so that we can? It seems like they're all going to be rolled into one, and I'm afraid that the article that I'm really here for, because I appreciate that the zoning board has rewritten this and gotten rid of cottage industries or whatever the word was, and, you know, substituted it with better language. So, you've done a good job in all of that. The problem is there's something here that people, I think, want to discuss, and we don't want to miss it. So, if you could give us a quick overview of what the articles do, I'd appreciate it. Maybe all of us would.
Sure. Yes, I think Jason did that, but as I understand it, Article B would be the least controversial of these. Of course, you can't tell from what just transpired, but that's, he's described it as a cleanup article and to make definitions more consistent with, with the words as they're used and, and things of that nature. Article C, if somebody were to ask me, I would say that one's wicked important. That one has to deal with accessory dwelling units. There's going to be some controversy there. There's going to be some excitement. Maybe it'll be like the Oscars. Article D is having to do with the transit overlay dis, no, that's the open space, open space, Article D. That's kind of important, not as wicked as important as Article C. And Article E is wicked, wicked important, and that's the transit overlay. So, if I were a betting man, I would say the ones that bring me the most excitement are C and E. And indeed, if we talk about anything of substance other than I lost my place or something, if there's anything of substance discussed over here, we'll be glad to synopsize that. And if you see Amy strangle me or something, you'll understand that I really messed something up.
In your, that was a good question. In your packet that was handed out, there's a letter from me dated earlier this month. And it has each article section on it. It's, it's a letter. It has subheadings, and it says what each separate article is intended to do. So, for example, it talks about Article B, which is what we just talked about. It talks about Article C, which is the accessory dwelling units, where we're going to impose some standards for those. It talks about those. It talks about Article D, which is the open space residential subdivisions. And the letter finally talks about Article E, which is the transit-oriented overlay, transit-oriented village overlay district. So, that letter will give you a thumbnail of what each one of these articles is about. It's in your packet, and that's all I have to say at this point, but there'll be more said later.
Gentleman here, then the young lady over there, followed by the gentleman back there, and then the gentleman over here. So, we have the next.
Thank you all for coming tonight. I haven't been to a town meeting in quite a few years. John Kulikowski, 5 Phillips Avenue, Rockport, of course. But it's good to see all these people. They apparently are interested in what's going on, and I am as well. I think the planning board has put together a lot of details. They worked very hard, and their credentials are impressive. They come from all areas and so forth. But you look at the audience, and I think we have a lot of people with impressive credentials out here. A lot of people have a good common sense, and they're knowledgeable in zoning and knowledgeable in housing and knowledgeable in Rockport. The zoning board really is scattered throughout Rockport, sort of like the four corners of Rockport. You have people in Athena Way, Marmion Way, Green Street, which is close to me, Pigeon Hill. All these areas really encompass most of Rockport, but none of them are really close to the railroad station, which is an important area because a lot of zoning impacts that area. So, that area's not really represented that well with the planning board, but that's okay. The planning board worked closely with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, the MAPC, which was created in 1963. Now, people probably have heard the term before, but I don't know if anybody knows their mission. According to them, their mission statement is, "Our mission," quote, "our mission is to promote smart growth and regional collaboration. Our regional plan, Metro Common 250, guides our work as we engage the public and responsible stewardship of our region's future. We work towards sound municipal management, sustainable land use, protection of natural resources, efficient and affordable transportation, a diverse housing stock, public safety, economic development, clean energy, healthy communities, an informed public, and equity and opportunity among people of all backgrounds," quote, close quotes. Man, oh, man, they do everything. They, unfortunately, if you look through the lines and look at their website and you really study it and read in between the lines, you find out that they like to control a lot of things. They, they want to control the width of the sidewalk. They want to control energy, what kind of energy, how it's used and so forth, efficiency of energy. They want to control the size of roads. They want to control just about everything, maybe your toothpaste even, I don't know. But if you look at it, and it's there for anybody who wants to see it, the audience is smart enough, they know enough to realize what things are going on. When they say regional collaboration, they mean regionalization with Boston. Regionalization with Boston means we trade our government officials and bureaucrats that we know and possibly influence for government officials and bureaucrats we don't know and have less influence. Rockport just becomes a small cog or even a small area on the map. The regionalization of these really control freaks, as far as I'm concerned. We would eventually end up with very little say in our town of Rockport. Some in the town say they can control the, I guess, the, basically, the interactions between us and these regional groups. I say they won't be able to. The reason I say that is, we even heard several times mentioned by Mr. Shaw that these documents, the zoning documents are a living or changing paper, all right, or whatever you want to call it, bylaws, which means they could change easily. Okay? So, I think the threat is there that we may lose control.
We're just talking about an amendment that's on the floor. So, I think we're.
This is pertinent to all the amendments.
Why don't we, why don't we wait and you can, when we finish with that amendment?
I can do this right now, so.
No, sorry, you're, you're done. You can come back later. We have to deal with this amendment. You're, you're done for now. You can come back. While that gentleman was talking, Mr. Shaw and, and Toby spoke, Mr. Shaw represented that he's going to with, that he is going to restore the dates, and based on that, Toby has agreed to withdraw his motion.
We're, we're going to try to speed things up, and as I'm sitting there listening to what's going on, yeah, we're going to restore the dates. There's no, I mean, even if people want them, they can have them, and we'll move on. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we're still talking about B. Anyone now want to talk about B in general? We had this gentleman, and it's going to be followed by that woman, and then that man, and then that man. So, and then we'll talk from, hear from other people. Go ahead, ma'am.
Sharon Olson, 11 Highland Street. I may be getting ahead of myself. You'll have to correct me if I am. On page 14, under yield plan, and then it deals with the groundwater and water runoff. That entire section, the zoning that seems to protect the groundwater, water runoff, surface water, the whole thing, the entire section and all the zones are lined out. I don't see any language replacing that, and I'm confused, so I was wondering if you could clarify.
Okay. I will give the planning board a chance to work on that. Let's hear from.
Thank you.
The other gentleman in back, and then we'll go to this gentleman, and then we'll keep going. There was a gentleman in back. Okay?
John Penalosa, 46 Main Street. At this point, it's mostly a point of order, which is that we were told that on page 22, line E, which refers to one accessory dwelling unit per lot and has the various permissions for different districts, that that was moved to Article C. I'd like, I'd like a clarification as to exactly where the language is being moved to.
The original motion read that we moved Article B be approved, except that the revisions to the Town of Rockport zoning bylaw, Article 5, B1, line E, page 22, be deleted. So, that's what operated to keep those the same for now. And again, we did that because Article C is going to cover those, and we may go back at that point and change it, and it may be subject to other changes.
So, so E still will exist in its current form without the strike throughs?
At the now, yes.
I'd like to move to amend the current Article E.
We're going to hold off on any amendments to Article E until we talk about accessory dwelling units.
I'm sorry, not Article E, line, line E of the principal permitted uses and structures.
Yes, we're going to hold off on any discussions of that until we get to Article C.
If nobody gets to Article C, if it's not considered at tonight's meeting, then no changes.
Then, if it's not, if it's not considered ever, then you'll have a chance to make that motion. If for whatever reason it's, let's say it's postponed until six months from now, you'll get to make that motion.
Right.
Trust me on that. But right now, let's talk about B. Let's not talk about anything having to do with accessory dwelling units because that's going to be something we talk about for a very long time. And at that point, you can make any other changes to that line that you wish.
Assuming that we discuss Article C tonight.
Or tomorrow night, or next week, or whenever, some point before all of this discussion is over, you will have a chance to make any changes, any, any motions you want as to that line.
And prior to voting on Article B?
It will come back, and we will revisit that line when, when, and either when we discuss Article C or when we decide not to discuss Article C.
Okay.
But you will have a chance to discuss that line.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else before we get to you, Peter? Just wait a minute. Yes, we'll get to you. We're going to get to everybody, so relax.
Beth Sullivan for Summit. Jason, it's really a question for you because Article B seems to be the whole 125 pages of stuff that allegedly has nothing to do with Article C, D, or E, but my, but I'm not sure about that. So, for example, on page 37, where it talks, has the grid about the parking, does the standards that appear in that grid apply to Article D and E? Or is this something separate? It's unclear to me where Article B controls only one thing and all the other articles control other changes. I'm asking whether there is anything in Article B in the 100-plus pages of changes, much of which is language and somewhat immaterial, but substantively, there are things like parking requirements. And it appears on page 37 in a grid that assigns a certain number of spaces per unit. And I'm asking if that parking requirement is related to the later considered article regarding the transit development.
To answer your question, so article. My name is Chris Kuschel. I'm from MAPC. I promise you that we are not trying to control the town of Rockport despite the earlier comments. As it relates to the specific comments, Article D. Article D, VOD, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Article E is the.
Okay. So, Article E, which will be discussed later, is for a new overlay district. This is something that I think we all know will be probably controversial. If, if any new development that could occur under that new overlay district would have the parking requirements that are required for the town. That's, so.
The answer is yes. Parking requirements that appear on page 37, they can apply to the later.
They apply to the later articles if the later articles are, are passed. Yes, I, I think of it the reverse, but yes. Okay.
With the mask to take all of the changes that are in this document, Article E.
I just want to clarify how many other things are in Article B that will later be applicable to the subsequently considered articles. So, for example, now, this gentleman has just said, yes, the parking requirements, if adopted. So, for example, now, this gentleman has just said, yes, the parking requirements, if adopted during Article B, will then apply to the article on transit oriented development. Did I understand your answer correctly? Okay. So my other question then, in the more broad context, because I used that as an example, are there other substantive issues in Article B that will affect later on? That mean, because you're asking us to read, and you did a fabulous job, by the way, in all the ministerial and administrative changes and all that stuff. That's, that's great. But I think many of us are having a hard time understanding when you say, Article B, what are we really agreeing to, so that when we get into a later discussion, somebody says, "But we already fixed that," and people are gonna be like, "Well, yeah, it didn't apply." So I'm just trying to ask, is there, are there substantive issues in Article B that are more than ministerial in relation to the subsequent articles?
For example, the zoning enforcement, that would apply to all articles, something we do. Do you want to answer? Yeah.
The question is, are there other provisions in Article B that, that would apply to the later articles? I think part of the problem, and this is just kind of an administrative thing, is that we haven't talked about these other articles yet, so, you know, it's, it's hard to know what's in them. But the answer is yes, there are other things that will apply. For example, zoning enforcement will apply to Article E, even though it's in Article B. Site plan review, which is in Article B, will apply to Article E, which is the transit-oriented village overlay district. And there, and there could be others. Can I stand up here now and go through every instance of something in Article B that may have application to Article E? I don't think I can do that. I don't know if everybody wants me to do that. So that, but the answer in just in general, yes, there are. Article E is not just standalone, separate from the rest of the zoning. All the other zoning provisions that are not, that are in Article B will apply to Article E. I hope that answers your question. And in terms of, someone brought up the water supply overlay district. Bro, we're gonna give you an answer to that shortly, too, but just answer this lady's question. The answer is yes. Okay? Hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Okay. We will go Peter and then this gentleman.
Lot of confused faces out here. Pete Burgholtz, 2 Pool Place. I'm the vice chairman of the zoning board. I'm gonna brag. I've been doing this for 30 years. I've sat on 1,000 cases. I've written 400 of them, including Shalin Liu and just about any other big case in this town. I have reviewed the 150 pages in Article B. Our bylaw has been a mess for a long, long time, and these guys, I never thought I'd say this, these guys did a great job. A good job. We can spend an hour on all, each of 150 pages, but I'm, I guess what I'm asking is, we're where the rubber meets the road. We use this stuff every month, and we know what's good, what's bad, and what's messed up, and we try to make the best of it. With this Article B, our job is gonna be a lot easier. I guess I'm asking you to take my word for it, and just, let's vote this thing in. Thanks.
Gentlemen, this gentleman, don't worry, we'll get to everybody.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. My second concerns, the lady who spoke, because if we take a look at the section and, under section B on page 21, please confirm that page 21 is still in section B, planning board? You make principal defin, you make definitional changes to what is and what is not permitted by changing what zones are allowed for what types of structures. There are yeses and nos that switch, that are not a matter of defining terms. I'd make a motion that we move any changes to what is permitted out of the definitional changes that are in, make up the substance of Article B, because I don't feel comfortable voting on changes to definitions at the same time we're voting on changes to what is and what is not permitted in a table form, which goes on for seven pages that I haven't read in completeness. Can we get a motion to separate the definitional changes from the changes to what's permitted?
Yeah, town council tells me that's not a valid amendment. I understand what you're saying, but I think the point, the point is that this first article is more than just the definitions, but that's much of what it is, but it's not all. There are some substantive things. There is that table, and we can talk about making changes to lines in that table, and it may be ugly and painful and time-consuming, but I don't think that we can move it at this point. At least, that's the opinion of town council.
We've split previous articles into two parts before in town meeting. Why is this one not eligible for splitting into two parts?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There are five articles on the warrant, and those are, those were, those were advertised as five articles. You are proposing a separate article.
I'm asking in relation to the precedence of our town meetings, where we have split articles to increase the number of articles voted on at a town meeting, why are you saying we have a limit of five?
Because you're, you're proposing a new article. You're proposing an article that applies only to the definitions.
Then I propose we subdivide the article into two separate votes under the same article. Would that satisfy the procedural...
That would be up to, that would be up to the moderator. It's his meeting.
Split the vote? Just split the vote? I don't know how it's gonna work. I don't think it would.
I think as we get towards actually voting on something, I'm gonna think of that, and I'll get back to you. I think we probably could, if we went through dividing, dividing the...
Just separate, separate the changes to the permits from the changes to the definition.
Please, you're talking about dividing the question. I think we could probably do that, but let's, let's go forward a little bit further and hear some substantive discussion.
Thank you for seconding my motion.
So, so he, does he have an amendment?
He's got a motion to divide the question.
An amendment to this one?
Yeah, yeah.
He has an amendment to the article?
Yeah, so you wanna hear it now?
No.
All right. So apparently, there is an article, there is a motion to amend to bifurcate the vote to separate out the tables, or is it more than the tables? Give us the page number where you want to divide it, and we can talk about it.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street, page 21, table of permitted uses. The changes to the allowed uses should be, I put a motion forward that the table of allowed uses is separate and distinct from the changes in definitions, and should be considered under a subordinate motion.
What about awards to it? And there are other things beyond that? Do you want to do that?
How will you send this to the agency? 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 How will you send this to the agency?
To answer Mr. Johnson's question, town council is talking with the gentleman who wants to try to bifurcate this, to figure out if it can be done. It seems, town council's opinion is that it cannot, and we're trying to figure out if there's a way that it can or it cannot. But I'm going to go with what town council says, because I always trust lawyers. Do you have anything further regarding your motion?
Charles Peterman, 21 Pleasant Street. I've spoken with town council and with the planning board, and they assure me that these two things are not separable and not meaningful if done independently, in which case I don't consider myself really competent to even be voting on this at this time. But here we are. In order to prevent any further use of people's time for this to go round and round, I rescind my motion. Not my concern, but my motion. Thank you.
Anyone who has not spoken this evening? Okay, woman at the microphone.
Hello, Emily Hayes, 166 Main Street. I move that we vote on Article B as it stands.
I think you meant Article B. Are you moving the question?
Yes.
Okay. So there's been a motion to move the question. That requires a two-thirds vote, and there is no discussion.
I have one question, though, because my question was never answered.
Hold on, please. Once a motion to move the question has been made, the only discussion that I'll hear is somebody asking what that means, and it's not debatable, and then we're going to vote. We have our wonderful clickers, and if two-thirds vote to pass that motion, then we go right on to vote on Article B.
Tell everyone from the cafeteria you come in to vote.
So if people are in the cafeteria, and you want to vote, we're going to vote whether to move this question.
Article B.
Article B, as in Bravo, okay? I will allow it to be read. I don't have the breath to do that, but I'll allow it to be read as it is presented. Do you want to read, not the whole motion, but the, the summary that you read earlier?
So we're supposed to vote exactly as per...
Yeah. There is a point of order, yes.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. People are tired and disgusted. It's all confusing, and now we're going to flip a coin and so forth. There are things in the warrant which are defective, places where things are started to be printed and they end in midair. Also, it is the case that at the public hearing, the zoning maps for the coastal... it is the case that at the public hearing, the zoning maps for the coastal floodplain district were not on file at the town clerk's office on the day of the hearing as required. So the vote on Article B may be challenged. This is not a proper way to conduct the town's business. It is the Planning Board's doing that 130 pages were cast upon you, and now a flip of the coin because we're too tired to go through it bit by bit. It deserves better, and we're all going to live with the consequences.
I don't know if that was a point of order, but we are now going to vote on moving this question. It requires a two-thirds vote, and on your handy clicker, you're going to press 1, or A, for yes, you want to move this question, which means go right to a vote, and B, or 2, means no, you want to keep talking about it. Okay? Anyone have a question as to what your vote means? Are we ready? Starting now. Isn't this fun? 191 to 76, and the percentages? Seventy-two percent. So that means that's more than two-thirds. I learned that in math right here in this high school. And so, we are now going right on to a vote on Article B. And Article B also needs a two-thirds vote. Are you ready? Okay. Again, 1 is for yes, 2 is for no. Starting now. 163 to 112, and the percentages? Fifty-nine to 41. The motion fails. So now, we will go on to Article C. Puberty. C for Charlie.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article C be approved as printed in the May 16, 2022 special town meeting warrant, adding that the Town of Rockport zoning bylaw, Article 5, Section B, Roman numeral 1, Line E, be amended to delete the words, provided the minimum lot area required in the zoning district where the lot is located is provided for each dwelling on the lot, and to permit as of right one accessory dwelling unit per lot in the R, A, R, S, M, R, G, and D zoning districts. And further, that the town clerk be authorized to make any and all ministerial changes, including but not limited to grammar, punctuation, and corrections to the codification and numbering to ensure correctness. Board of Selectment and Planning Board support this article. Zoning Board of Appeals does not support this article.
Hello. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone, for your patience. So far, so good, right? So, in the spirit of the perfect not being the enemy of the good, I'd like you to keep an open mind as we make our way through this portion of the presentation. Can we have the presentation? I think it's pretty well established that we have a housing crisis. It's not just in Rockport that we have a housing crisis, but it's particularly acute in Rockport. You can't talk to anyone without them telling you about a family member, people who grew up here who can't afford to live here, elderly people who maybe want to downsize but can't afford, if they sell their homes, they don't have anywhere to go. So we have a serious, serious problem in this town. The proposals that we're making tonight and the changes that we're proposing are not the answer to all of the problems. They are one step in the direction of trying to address this challenge. It's going to take all of us lots of work and energy and focus to do more than just what we're doing tonight. But these proposed changes are a step in that direction, and I'd like you to keep that in mind. What we're proposing may not be perfect, but it's an effort to try to address this problem. So with respect to affordable, excuse me, accessory dwelling units, there's language up here about the housing crisis and our efforts on the Planning Board to try to conform with the housing choice law. A lot of the changes that you'll be hearing about with respect to accessory dwelling units and the transit-oriented village overlay district derived from this housing choice law, which was passed last year, and I think it's important for people to understand that the housing choice law was not intended to be an affordable housing law. The goal of the housing choice law was to generate the creation of more housing along the MBTA lines with the goal that if there's more supply, prices will come down of themselves. We'll see if that happens, but that was the intent. And if you believe in the laws of supply and demand, that should happen. Not with one development like the Halyard, which I know is not affordable, but with every community doing what it can to try to move in this direction, we will hope to see more affordable prices over time. Okay, next slide, Melanie. So, we've talked a lot, we've kind of put the horse, the cart before the horse here, and talked a lot about accessory dwelling units before getting to this actual section. So you probably understand already that accessory dwelling units are self-contained dwelling units, either within a principal residence or detached from that residence. We already have an ADU provision, but that provision requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Unfortunately, that provision lacks standards. So at this point in time, the Zoning Board of Appeals can grant a special permit for an ADU, but there's no need for that ADU to comply with setback requirements. There's no need for that ADU to conform with the look and feel of the primary residence or the character of the town. What the Planning Board tried to do with these provisions in the ADU section was to build in some standards so that if somebody is allowed an ADU by right, which we've talked about a little bit, rather than by special permit, that ADU has to conform to these standards. That's the goal. And the current bylaw does not allow for attached ADUs, and we think that that's a change that needs to be made to allow for more flexibility, to create more housing opportunities in the town. The current bylaw also allows for short-term rentals, and we know that from anecdotally, and if you look at the listings, you can see that the town has lost a lot of short, excuse me, apartment rentals to Airbnb and other short-term rentals. So we need to try to make up for that loss, and one of the things we did to try to address that was build in a minimum rental period within the language of the ADU bylaw that we're proposing. And we worked with, we worked with MAPC on the language in the proposed bylaw so that what we're proposing conforms to best practices that you'll see in other communities. We really want to bring the language up to prevailing standards. In other communities, they're dealing with similar challenges, and we want to make sure that we're meeting those standards. So, you can see on this slide that there are different types of accessory dwelling units. There's the over-the-garage type, a garage conversion, a standalone unit, or a basement or attic conversion. We think that it should be permissible in the town for homeowners to create any type of ADU that's illustrated here, provided that they conform to the other standards that we've outlined in the language. So, on the next slide, what the ADU Section 5C does, it allows for ADUs as of right within an existing dwelling or detached structure, except in the SRAA and SR zoning districts, where they are permitted, where they are currently prohibited. The change that we made here was that in those two districts, they be allowed by special permit only, thereby granting more flexibility and better benefits to people who live outside of those two districts. It's a benefit to be able to create an ADU by right. We're being more restrictive in the SRAA and SR zoning districts because they'll still have to go to get a special permit. The proposed language creates rules for size and appearance of internal and external ADUs, and these were not arbitrary guidelines. These did come out of standard practice for what an ADU is and should be in the industry. The language in the proposed bylaw allows for 900 square feet, the lesser of 900 square feet, or 33% of the gross floor area of the primary residence. So it's really trying to keep the ADU within the character of the lot and the home, and not try to build a two-family home on a lot. The proposed language requires a minimum six-month lease and strictly prohibits short-term rentals and includes teeth in the language for the enforcement of these provisions. There's rules that apply to the discontinuance of the use of the ADU. So should the homeowner fail to conform to the requirements, they will lose the right to continue to offer the ADU as a rental unit, and it creates another housing option with minimal adverse effects. So, it really is intended to try to create some flexibility for homeowners, give some room, some breathing room for elderly people, for example, who want to move out of their primary residence and live in an ADU and rent out their home. This is, this is really what this was intended to do. There may be some language in the bylaws that is, could be clearer with respect to these provisions, but this is the intent, and we can certainly come back and amend the language as we go forward and learn more about how it's playing out. We ask that the special permit authority for the SRAA and SR zoning districts reside within the Planning Board, because this is how it works in 13 of the 15 surrounding communities. This is standard practice as it relates to ADUs, and because the Planning Board devised these rules and will oversee them with a sharp eye to ensuring that homeowners conform to them, the Planning Board feels best positioned to be able to be the body that allows for the special permits. And again, this is standard practice within this kind of zoning provision. That's my presentation.
Okay, we're going to hear from everybody, but before we hear from the public, let's hear from the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. The Board of Appeals, Rockport Board of Appeals is in opposition to Article C of the town warrant for the proposed bylaw changes as they relate to accessory dwelling units. From this point on, I'll refer to them as ADUs, okay, which were written by the Planning Board and their consultant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council from Boston. That part of things, we really feel like these were not written for Rockport. They were written, there were a lot of these things, I feel they were click and paste and brought in from different cities, and they came into our town. The Board of Appeals had no part in any of the writing of this bylaw, this Article C. It was done strictly by the Planning Board and the MAPC. The Board of Appeals recognizes the dire need for moderate and affordable housing in Rockport. In fact, we've approved numerous units over the years, ADUs, in numerous different districts in this town. We've actually, we've even approved them by variances in a couple of places where the entire neighborhood came out in favor of that dwelling unit. We did one in Pigeon Cove about a year ago, and that one there was a situation where they had three, four acres of land, and on all that land, they wanted to put a house for one of the daughters to live in and move her two children from Kitefield Road over to this property. And we approved a house of size that they presented in front of us, big enough for a family with a couple of children in our school systems to live in. And we changed that young lady's life. That was a huge thing for that family. It was a huge thing for that young lady. She got to, they gave, we were able to give her a present to her family, gave her a present of a lot. It stays as one lot, but it gave her a present of the place to boot her house, and they put up a modular home. And it's huge in someone's life, and it, but it goes through a public hearing where these decisions are made, and that doesn't just happen with no input from their neighbors. The board, so the boards, okay, and allow, so the first, one of my first bullet points, and you'll see a lot of this in your, a little supplement that's been added to your brochures, allowing ADUs to be built by right is something we feel very strongly about, public hearings and special permits. To do it without special permits, it's a mistake. I don't, I just can't stand the idea of neighbors calling me up and saying, there's a guy building something next to me. I asked him if it was a garage, and they told me, no, it's a house. And there are a lot of constraints on these houses, but by rights, a major change, okay? And I don't think a lot of the people here tonight probably were at those meetings. There were a couple of meetings. We had a meeting, we had a meeting the same night as one of their, one of their public hearings, when this is discussed, but building ADUs without any, any public hearings is, we're very, really strongly against that idea. The rules dictating size, I elaborated on it a little bit earlier. The Board of Appeals feels that the 900-square-foot proposal, that the one-size-fits-all concept, it's unacceptable for numerous reasons. And again, the downtown area, 900 square feet, could very well be way too much. We just did a couple down around five corners, and it was the same, it was a garage, and they made it, and actually, this daughter lived in it for a little while, wants to live in it for a while. But it's a small building, and it was built 100 years ago, and we allowed that building to become an ADU. It required a variance to do that, but it made a lot of sense. It's right at the fork of Five Corners, and it's a short walk from the train, and we felt this thing was, really made a ton of sense. And again, it was a case where with, with this advertised and with people talk, having the chance to talk about it, and we asked, okay, now it's a time in the public hearing for anyone in the general public to stand up and talk about this. Do they have a favorable, negative? They look around, you look around, and nobody got up. Why didn't, why didn't they get up? Reason is that everybody was for it who lived around that. And there's another one that came a month later, same situation. So we approve accessory dwelling units, but they come with hearings, and when you hear the ones that, that no one's opposed to, you know, then, then you're leaning towards, if this thing makes sense, it's not detrimental to the neighborhood, then we approve it. And this is a longstanding practice, okay? Well, Gloucester, Gloucester does not, has not for many, many years, they did not like two houses on one lot. They really were against that kind of thing. So they didn't, they've been much more difficult in ADUs than we are. But this, this ADU law, bylaw that's in front of you is quite a bit different than anything we've had. Sizes, sizes, we really are for these bigger houses sometimes. We have someone with a couple acres of land, and they want to build a house on that land, and whether they want to live in the big one, the little one, I don't really care. If this house, if neighbors and such are in favor and it meets all the setback requirements and the lot coverage requirements, then we tend to approve these, okay? We want to see this. We need growth. We need kids in our schools. You know, otherwise, in 10 years, we're not going to even have a school system in Rockport unless we're willing to kick in a whole lot more taxes to get it done. So we're definitely against this size thing. Then there's a whole list of things that require to do at the ownership situation. We really feel that, that the ownership, you know, we need small houses and different houses. We need everything, you know, and it's not just Rockport, okay? Who said that was just Rockport? It's not, it's everywhere. It's all around this whole area. There's a housing problem, okay? We recognize that here in town, but controlled growth is a good thing. It protects both sides of that property line, the guy next door and the person who's in front of us as an applicant. And we listen hard when they come in, both sides. You all get to talk, to talk about it. You all get to talk, to talk about it. And so we, we don't think that, when the market comes in, let them come in and tell us what size they're looking for and we'll tell you if this is too big or not. We'll send you back to the drawing board. A lot of times when people come in front of us at these public hearings, we'll then give them a little indicator that, hey, this is too big, okay? You know, why don't, you see the whole board? We get five people here. We try to work with people so they get to see how the, how's the board, what we're thinking about. And they can see there's five people, they are all five votes are saying, hmm, we think this thing's too big. Okay, then we ask them straight out, would you like to, would you like to take some time off, take, continue this to another night and come back in with something, something smaller and more acceptable to what you've heard your neighbors have a complaint with? These are the things that get done with these public hearings, okay? We, we've not been, the doors closed and you can never build a little house and accessory dwelling. We've not done that at all. We're amenable, but a lot of times through our public hearings, we end up getting a better house, okay? It's a very successful process and we're proud of it. And it, sometimes it just comes out that your, your proposal is too much and you're going to get a no vote. This is the way it works. And each person in that board, you know, one vote each, we have five votes and if, and if you have two no votes, you're not going to get your accessory dwelling. But that, so we're, that's, that's how we go about doing it. Another part of the, the, the Article C, it changes who's going to handle special permits. Well, not only for all the years in Rockport, the planning board, you know, over our objection, our objection, has inserted itself as a special permit granting authority for ADUs. And again, this is not a, we're for, we were for Article B. We're not, we're not, this is not, this is a philosophy and understanding of zoning that we have here tonight in front of us all. It's not a personal thing in, in any way. But they, they wanted to take the, the decision-making to the, move it over to the planning board. Well, we did a little study of the 15 closest cities to the town of Rockport and 13 of those cities all make the decision by the Board of Appeals. A planning board, you can get elected one day and the next day with no training, you're going to be making that decision. You'll be sitting there, you'd be at one of the votes that counts. On the Board of Appeals, you can be appointed to be an associate member and we don't, we don't care if you're a lawyer or what you do, your background, architect, doesn't matter. You can get become associate member and it'll be a year or two before you're, you're up to, it'll take at least a year to get up to speed. Everybody, whoever has come on, you know, there, it's confusing what we go, what we do. And every bylaw in every city in town is different. So that adds to this confusion, as you guys can all see tonight, is that, you know, this stuff's not easy. So anyways, we really feel very strongly that the, the Board of Appeals, amongst the members of that board, we have 100 years of experience if you add up all the years that our board has, have been doing this. And I'm going to make, I'm going to, I am getting there. My last sentence, which is coming really quick, is that motion, okay? So we feel strongly about that process and getting it done. And the Board of Appeals members write these decisions. We train them how to write a decision and you write the decision. And that's what the person ends up recording at the registry deeds. And so that, that being said, we have so many problems with this. What we'd like to do is get cooperation with the planning board and the Board of Appeals working together with the public input to redo this thing. So here we are. The Board of Appeals is making the motion, this was, the Board of Appeals was unanimous and I want to make sure I understand this. We were unanimous in our vote to come out against Article C. So here it is. My motion will be to refer Article C to further study to the planning board in conjunction with the Board of Appeals for a period of 180 days.
To postpone consideration of this article and send it back for further study to the planning board in conjunction with the Board of Appeals for a period of 180 days. I will next hear from Jason Shaw, who is going to make an explanatory discussion of what was said earlier and then I guess respond to that motion.
Okay, just a couple of things. First of all, just a little house cleaning. The, Denise was, when she was talking, ADUs, accessory dwelling units, right now, without any change, are prohibited in the SRAA and SR districts, okay? That, under the proposal, they will remain prohibited in the SRAA and the SR districts. There's no special permit for them. But what we have done, and it's taken Alan a long time to explain what they do, because what they do is, depending on the application, they make a decision depending on what they decide is right for that time. Most recently, they gave an ADU to a local attorney who wanted a, who got a variance for an ADU on her property in one of their decisions. A variance requires you show financial hardship. That's what she got. She got a variance. What, okay, so that's part, he's talking about their decisions? That was one of their decisions. One of the things that we are trying to do here is to make people know, standardize, these are the rules. These are the rules, you have to have a place that's a minimum size and a maximum size. You have to be, the principal dwelling has to be occupied by the person who is renting out the ADU. The ADU cannot be rented out for Airbnbs or VRBOs. All those, all those conditions don't exist right now. ADUs, depending on the day, depending on who it is, they can either be granted or can either be denied. What we're doing is going by what the Baker administration wants communities to do. Create ADUs as of right so they can go to the building inspector with plans, submit the plans and have the building inspector either approve or deny them. Not going to, for a special permit and going to a hearing with five people, five diff, Alan said 100 years. I don't think they've all been there 100 years, but it changes, you know, every, every, there's a new member or whatever. Those memberships change, the sentiments of the people on the board change. This is standardizing the ADUs and this is protecting the residents of Rockport from Airbnbs, which as we know have really proliferated in the town. Cause it doesn't allow them and we have enforceable provisions in here that prevents them. Last thing is, we had two public hearings, one of which was on a day that no one from, which is on this one, nobody from the ZBA ever showed up at our public hearings. We had a joint meeting with the ZBA about the ADUs and other things. Their biggest concern at the joint meeting was that they retain the authority to issue the special permits. There was no complaints about the standards that we have here. So if we want to have standards, if we want to have rules that people have to abide by, then this is what we're offering. It makes it easier for people to create ADUs. They go to the building inspector instead of the ZBA and it's something that is really being urged by the Baker administration that we create the ADUs as of right. There's no need for further study or discussion on this. We've discussed it. We've had great comments from the public. They've told us what they think. We've incorporated those discussions. We had a joint meeting with the ZBA. We made changes based on the joint meeting. A further discussion would just delay the implementation of what we think are sound rules and regulations that should be applied to everybody across the board. Everybody knows what they are in advance and everybody's on a level playing field. Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion to postpone consideration of this article for a period of time, so any comments are going to just go to that motion to postpone. Charmaine? No? Anybody other than Toby? Tom? Yep, we'll get to you. I can only look in one direction at a time.
Good evening, I think it's still evening. My name is Tom Mekus. I'm vice chair of the planning board. If our goal is to create housing, we need to start doing something. The existing system allows the zoning board of appeals to issue ADUs that can be used for short-term rentals. And putting this off for some specified period of 180 days, I'm very skeptical. I've seen so many resolutions come before town meeting where we said, let's set a time limit, let's do something, and they're still pending years later. So if we want to create housing, we need to do it now.
Okay, Charlie, in the back.
Charlie CV, 18 Frank Street. Look, nobody is arguing that we need more housing. However, I think the appeals board has a few points here.
I, for some reason, I can't hear you. Can you just speak more closely into the microphone?
How's that?
That's better.
Okay, sorry. Anyway, we need housing, end of discussion. The appeals board has some points that I think are worth thinking about. Anytime somebody says one-size-fits-all, it raises my hackles. What works in Swambscott, for instance, might not necessarily work in Rockport. I think the 900 square foot limit, you're going to put three kids in a family in 900 square feet? Let's rethink that. I also think that doing it by right, I have mixed feelings, but by and large, I don't think that's a great idea because there are going to be a lot of phone calls saying, what the hell is the neighborhood doing? I think it's not outrageous to have a permitting thing on that. And as far as the two zones where no ADUs are permitted, if you've looked at the map, it looks to me like some neighborhoods more equal than others, but I'll let you think about that.
Okay, Toby, don't worry, I'll get to you. I'm just sweeping the room. This way? Anybody? Oh, in the back? Okay, we'll get to you. Gentlemen? Yes, Red Sox hat.
Hi, Heath Ritchie, One Woodbury Hill. I'm confused about how allowing a house to have an accessory dwelling unit inside of it is going to make that house cost less. That seems like it's going to make the housing price go up to me, but I'm not an economist.
Remember, we're just addressing a motion to postpone. In the back. Two people in the back, standing at the microphone.
Laura Halliwell, 37 High Street. I, I am not in favor of the motion to separate because I think there's been some confusion on the size issue. It sounded as if at one point there were discussions of a two-family, I mean, two real houses on a lot, whereas this motion by the planning board is trying to create ADUs, small units, which are not necessarily meant for the family. The family can live in the big one. So I think the confusion still for, for large acreage where they want a second house, that's appropriate for the zoning board, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about ADUs that have to go with the lot setbacks, so there shouldn't be too many complications. Thank you.
Okay, now, just want to remind everybody, we're talking about a motion to postpone. We're not at the merits of this argument. Mr. Sepola.
Yes, Z Sepola, 92 Granite Street. I'd be in favor of postponing this, the motion to postpone, for a number of reasons. First of all, Jason Shaw got up and talked, talked about putting everybody on an equal footing. And right away, some districts in town have a right to do this and some have to do it by special permit. I don't see any equal footing in that. The second thing is, it seems to me like the areas where these things could be the most practical use are out on the south end of town where you don't have to necessarily connect to a sewer because there isn't any sewer out there. And then if that land is perccable and large lots, then that's would be the places where you would want to see, I would think, the ADUs. So it seems to me this is a situation right now where the places that are clustered are going to get more clustered and the places that are, you know, pretty Downton Abbey-like are just going to stay that way. And, you know, I think that it's really, this needs to be discussed and looked at from many other aspects. Number one, the, the infrastructure needs that are going to be taking place with this thing. So I'm just going to say, I'd like to see this postponed with a lot more thought.
And note, we talked about postponement, so that was a very good reply, talking about postponement. Yes, sir. And Toby, I will get to you, don't worry. I want to hear from the other boys and girls.
John Penalozza, 46 Main Street. I think in general, the ADU proposal is timely and it's exactly the kind of solution Rockport needs. An existing homeowner has a vested interest in expanding or modifying their property in such a way that it increases value and that it has appeal and that it fits into the character of their own neighborhood. The same thing can't be said for projects like 40B housing with as many units crammed onto a lot as possible that will potentially impact, have an outsized impact on town resources as well, like water and sewage, as well as available parking. So I think ADUs give us an opportunity to naturally develop the town in, in a way that some of the other housing alternatives don't. But the devil's in the details, right? A while ago, the SR and then the SRAA districts were designated almost as zones that couldn't be touched, that, that nobody was going to impose any housing norms on, that the rest of the solutions that were good for Rockport were not good for them, right? So, so you may think of an ADU as something desirable and why wouldn't anybody want an ADU? And, oh, in this proposal, we're not going to allow these people to get ADUs, right? It's, it's the other way around. Rockport right now is challenged by money coming in from urban areas throughout the United States. Who knows what ill-gotten investments from around the world? There is incredible amounts of money chasing waterfront property all over the, the United States. And those forces, those economic forces are tearing our community apart. There are longtime Rockport residents that are getting gentrified out of their own homes who don't have an ability to pay skyrocketing taxes that, that go hand in hand with skyrocketing real estate values.
We're at four and a half minutes and we haven't heard postpone. We're talking about whether this should be postponed. We are not talking about the merits.
So the ADU is something that I need, could be, I think could be addressed tonight. I would wholeheartedly agree with passing an ADU amendment tonight, voting for it now, given the ability to give equal rules to all of Rockport. So I would urge you to support an amendment to change the SRAA and SR districts to the same treatment as the rest of Rockport will have for ADUs. And we pass the proposal tonight. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I want to hear the word postpone within the first 20 seconds of your presentation, or I will cut you off at 30 seconds. We are talking about a lot of things tonight, so as they say, let's focus. Yes?
Hi, Ashley Shed, 71 Granite Street. The zoning board of appeals has asked to postpone this article.
Move your, move your microphone, please.
So zoning board of appeals has asked to postpone this article. I'm going to ask that we do not postpone this article and that we vote on it. There has been ample amount of time to discuss any issues and concerns. It seems to be being presented that an accessible dwelling unit will not have any oversight or or not have to be compliant with meeting the rules and regulations of other committees, including the building inspector and the board of health and anything else that needs to go in front of those commissions or departments in order to make sure that it complies with all safety standards. This is about affordable housing and a need for housing and allowing Rockport to be more accessible. And it seems that there's a stray away from that conversation. If the ZBA had issues with the ADU and the planning board's decisions and plans putting this together, then it should be brought to attention much prior to this meeting. Thank you.[650.11][650.11](APPLAUSE).
Okay. Toby.
And we're going to go then around the room and hopefully vote soon.
Definitely postpone. Now I've got my foot in the door. Alan McMillan's, excuse me, Alan Battistelli's motion to postpone it was for 180 days. Actually, you have to name a date. It has to be a time certain, so we should have a calendar date if that's the motion. Otherwise, it isn't a proper one. Having heard both Alan and Jason Shaw, you can imagine that they're not going to put things together and agree about anything. So there's one other concern that would, you know, indicate that you might postpone it, and that is that we're going to provide sewer and water facilities for all of these units, which may spring up quite quickly. People are saying how much they're needed and all, and we have no calculations from the DPW commissioners as to how much sewage we can pump and treat and so forth. So that would be a good reason to postpone it, although if you hope that the board of appeals and the planning board will love each other and agree on something, you will hope in vain. I would like to speak against it. May I go on and do that or merely postpone it?
I did.
Anyway, I'll go on until I'm shut up.[753.88][753.88](LAUGHTER). We're told that these are going to put...[761.13][761.13](APPLAUSE).
And by the way, for the record, you needed to state your name. It's Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. I have it pretty well memorized, first time in 16 years. Okay, anybody else want to talk about motion to postpone it? Because otherwise, I think I've had enough. All right, woman in the back.
Paige Eaton, 6R High Street Court. Mostly, I'm not going to say postpone. It says for further study, and except for Toby, I hadn't heard what the further study was for. We're all postponing our own Monday nights. I think we should vote on it.[802.63][802.63](APPLAUSE).
Ma'am, could you state that again closer to the microphone? I didn't hear a word of that.
All right, I will be very loud now. Paige Eaton, 6R High Street Court. I'm just reading on this board of appeals letter that this is a vote to refer for further study, but except for Toby, I hadn't heard anybody else say what the further study was for. I'd rather not refer it for further study. I've already postponed by Monday night, as has everybody else. I said postpone. So I think we should vote on it.
Yes, sir.
Dan Waters, 71 Eden Road. I understand why the zoning board of appeals wants to postpone this because this is about one thing and one thing only: who decides? And what are the standards upon which they decide? And right now, the zoning board of appeals decides what it wants according to its own lights. Maybe their decisions are perfect, but they are not transparent and they are not accountable. We should vote on this and vote on it now.[872.11][872.11](APPLAUSE).
All right, last person, and then I feel like we're ready to vote. Yes, sir.
Mark Curley, 8 Old Pennsance Road. I vote that we, that we vote tonight. We don't want to postpone it. Planning board has spent countless hours on this project. They've had many public hearings. There's no reason to postpone it. Let's work on it and get it done tonight. Thank you.[905.56][905.56](APPLAUSE).
Okay. You've heard the motion. All those in favor of post...
Anyone from the cafeteria?
Anyone in the cafeteria? Bring me a burger if you're coming up. We're going to vote. The vote is a motion to postpone, consideration of Article C, for a period of 180 days, and to refer it back to the planning board in conjunction with the zoning board of appeals to study this matter further. If you want to postpone it, you're going to press 1 on your clicker. If you want to not postpone it and keep talking about it, we're going to press 2 on this clicker And this is a majority vote. That motion fails, so we are not going to postpone this. We are going to now talk about the merits of Article C. Charmaine.
Charmaine Blanchard, 16 and 1/2 King Street. I understand that we need more housing, and I don't disagree with ADUs in principle. I think what we need to look at is the two districts that are going to get notice if their neighbor decides to put one of these up, are going to get a say about what gets put up in their neighbor's yard and are going to get public hearing are the avenues and the south end. Every other place in town is going to get something put in their neighborhood without notice unless their neighbor is courteous enough to tell you, without any say, and it may or may not end up being detrimental to your house and your property values. So I want everyone to think about that because to me, that doesn't seem fair. That's not an even standard. I heard them say it's equal playing field for everyone in Rockport. I don't see how that's an equal playing field. I also think that the zoning board of appeals, having dealt with these before, should have a say in on what exactly goes in and not just leave it to the planning board. I heard Mr. Battistelli say that out of the 13 communities around here, the ZBA weighs in and determines, not the planning board. So I'd like you to think about that, too. Thank you.[1088.83][1088.83](APPLAUSE).
Just Denise Donnelly again. Just two points of clarification. One is, I made a mistake when I was presenting. There is currently no ADU allowed in the SRAA and SRA districts, and they will not be allowed in future under the current bylaws. So that was my mistake. I apologize for that confusion. Second of all, I was the person who brought up the 13 out of 15 communities, and those 13 communities have the planning board issuing the special permit for ADUs. Okay, thank you.
Yes, there's a really important point that Charmaine just made. Oh, yes, I can talk with better diction, the without any say. That's an important part. But we are really talking about a shifting lifestyle in this country. We have not been asked over the past 10 years, but we have opened our town, or it has been opened for us, by millionaire homes. We, as a town, are being asked in this utterly new environment in all of our lives to do our part to welcome people of lesser means and share our learning and our values, and it will not be easy. Jonathan?
Thank you. Jonathan Ring, 9 Pools Lane. I do, I will oppose this article, and I agree with that the zoning board of appeals should be the deciding agency on these, on the ACUs. They're... Oh, I'm sorry. I do agree with Battistelli, and I would oppose this motion. I do agree that the ACUs should be under the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. There's another issue, though, I want to bring to attention. I understand that even though the state has made legislation that indicates that this zoning bylaw can be voted on by majority vote, I think, unless we've already done it, the, I think, town meeting has to accept that legislation by a vote if we're going to change our rules for which we vote on zoning bylaws. The other zoning bylaws that we were discussing, that we voted on, required a 2/3 majority. And I believe that all of the other zoning bylaws, C, D, and E, should also require a 2/3 majority, not a majority vote, because we haven't accepted that provision from the state legislature.[1313.15][1313.15](APPLAUSE). Thank you.
Thank you again, Amy Questle, Town Council, through the moderator. The change was made to General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, which used to require a 2/3 vote for every zoning amendment. The change was made with the Housing Choice Bill, which allows for certain zoning amendments to be made by a majority vote. Allowing ADUs as of right is a majority vote. Thank you.
Okay. Toby?
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. The proposal is the triumph of good wishes and high hopes over common sense and plain economic facts. You're told that this may provide affordable housing, affordable by whatever definition, not the state's definition, but that's an assumption on no basis or grounds. Anyone who has these units is limited to the six months and can't rent them for like Airbnb, Airbnb's, but they can rent them for as much money as they can possibly get for them. And if you were inviting people into your home, wouldn't you want to get as much money out of it as possible? I mean, the planning board is assuming that the people who build these or convert their houses, it's some sort of philanthropic endeavor. Why would that be the case? They'll get as much money as possible. Also, it's assumed that these are for older people who would want to radically downsize or working people who couldn't afford a proper apartment. Again, these will just be more apartments at whatever the market will bear. Then, we're talking about non-subsidized housing and less expensive. That's all assumption. These are excluded from the count for multifamily housing and buildings. That's simply dishonest. They're units and ought to be counted along with any others when you're calculating the number of units you're putting on a lot. That's just common sense and fair play. The property owner must reside on the premises. That was an objection I brought up at the planning board's hearing, and they believe they fixed it. I don't, I'm not so sure. People create blind trusts with the intention that nobody knows who owns anything, and how do you even find out who the owner is? Such trusts are created so that you can't find out. So who's to track all that down? Then, there are rules for interior ADUs on page 127 and also, again, on page 128, saying that these things need to look like the structures they're part of and the buildings in the neighborhood. But that only applies to the views from the street. So apparently, the planning board, we don't care what the poor unfortunate neighbors look at. And there's a section in there, I don't have it here, on counting the number of units that I thought was gibberish. If I had picked it up and remembered to bring it here, I could quote it to you and you could appreciate it. So this is all hopeful rather than realistic.[1551.53][1551.53](APPLAUSE).
Hi, Jane O'Malley, 63 Pigeon Hill Street.
You need to speak right into the mic.
All right. Jane O'Malley, 63 Pigeon Hill Street. I love ADUs. I know they've been really popular in other part of the country, so I'm all for them, attached or non-attached, and I think the size will take care of itself. It's relative to the square feet of the house, and it's totally appropriate. And I'm all for the planning board overseeing this. They're clearly well-qualified. Look at all the work that they've done on this. I do have questions, though. One is, and I did listen in on the hearings that they had this winter, and it was all very interesting. It just showed how much work they put into it. And, but one is, there's a six-month minimum for the resident to be there, for it to be an ADU. And I still feel, I'm concerned, because our whole goal of being here tonight is to create good, solid, year-round, affordable housing, to make a strong community in all ways, multi-generational, the whole works. So I still feel there's a seasonal aspect to a six-months requirement, and maybe someone could speak to that. I know the reason was so that some people could go to Florida, was what I heard, or something, you know, have two residences, but I guess I'd feel better about it if it was longer. I think it still could be a seasonal rental. The other thing I had was, if someone from the DPW, I think everyone has a question about sewer and water. It's a long-term question here in town, a concern, and what the whole build-out of all this potentially could be and the impact on our sewer and water for all the projects tonight. But anyway, I'm all for the ADUs. I hope we can vote on them tonight. Oh, I had one more question, I'm sorry. Make it quick was, it may be premature, and you can say so, but some people have houses, accessory dwellings, just all set to go. All they have to do is put a stove in because the ZBA approved all that stuff. And so is there going to be any financial program for people who aren't, like, well-to-do who want to do an ADU for a relative? Thank you.[1692.41][1692.41](APPLAUSE).
Jane, I didn't understand your last question. Will there be any financial aid? Do you know? You may not even know it at this point. It may be premature, but I was just wondering if people did know.
Yeah, that's not within the purview of the planning board.
Sure. I was wondering if anyone knew then, if there would be, too, because it then would make it more accessible for everyone to do an ADU, you know? So that would be very important to me for a relative. Thank you.
Yep. With respect to the six months, we relied on the definition of what a primary residence is, defined by the IRS, and that's how we settled on the six months, also because there are people who go to Florida for part of the year, and we wanted to allow for that option, but primarily because of the IRS definition where we stipulate in the bylaws that the owner must have as a primary residence either the primary residence or the ADU, and that's where that six months came from.
Larry Salo, 45 Stockholm Avenue. Mr. Shaw said that he developed this plan by what Governor Baker wants. He no longer has a summer home in Rockport, so it should be what we want. Nobody is going to be building next to him by right.
I couldn't hear.[1786.41][1786.41](APPLAUSE). Dana, I mean, Larry, would you repeat that? We couldn't hear you up here. Speak right into the microphone. I don't know.
I said, Mr. Shaw developed these plans based on what Governor Baker wants, but he no longer has a summer home here. So it should be what we want, because nobody's going to be developing next door to him by right.
Go ahead.
Charlie Sebey, 18 Frank Street. That's a tough act to follow. Look, people going to Florida for the winter aren't the kind of people that are going to be living in ADUs. That's a silly argument. I want to get back to my 900 square feet with the three kids. I would like to propose a change to, this is on page 128.
Are you making amendment?
Yes. Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Page 128, Section 7, Paragraph A, where it says, wait a minute, I gotta get my bifocals here. Maximum of 900 square feet or 40% of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. Okay, let's change that to whichever is more, so we can get three kids into something that's a little bigger than 900 square feet.
Okay. All right. So does everyone understand the amendment? He is changing the words "less" to "more."
And I notice it's in the text here, it says 40%, and I think Denise said something about 33% earlier, and I prefer the 40%.
Okay. It's been moved in second. And what page is that on, so we can all follow it?
128.
Page 128.
Section 7, Paragraph A, like, the third line.
All right. So that would mean that we'll be changing. A detached accessory dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 250 square feet and a maximum of 900 square feet or 40% of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is more.
Yeah, or greater.
Or greater. So it's whichever is more. It's been advised that we make it whichever is greater. Is that acceptable?
Yes, absolutely.
So that, that will read whichever is greater. Now we are talking to the amendment only, so anyone who would like to discuss this amendment, please step forward. Denise, do you have something to say?
Yes, just a point of clarification. The, as I said during my presentation, ADUs were never intended to solve all of our housing problems. It's one solution, and obviously, a smaller dwelling is not going to be suitable for a family with three children. ADUs are suitable for elderly people, for single people, for a couple, but they were never intended to solve the problem of family living.
Okay, remember now, we're just talking to the amendment. Go ahead.
Yes, Laura Halliwell, 37 High Street. I would oppose this amendment, because you could have a situation where someone had a very large house, for example, 4,000 square feet, and this would allow them to build as an ADU by right what would be much larger than many people's homes. So I do not think this is appropriate.
Would anyone else like to speak to the amendment? Toby, looks like you're the only one, and then we're ready to vote. Oh, one other person. Go ahead.
As to how many people might occupy such a unit, never mind whether you think it desirable, you have a family of 12 in it, or just three or four, will Town Council please tell us, if someone comes forward with the appropriate money for the rent and the deposit and some references, could you say no to a family of eight or a dozen?
You cannot. Okay, the last person to speak, and then we're ready to vote.
Lori McKenna, 31 High Street. I'm in support of the amendment, because I'm, we are, at 31 High Street are actually considering doing this. We have a smallish house, and if we're limited to, and we have a very strangely shaped parcel, which is sort of half of the letter H, and our existing house is in the bit in the middle of the H, it would be very difficult for us to meet the setbacks for this auxiliary dwelling. And even if we could, we would be really, really limited to the size of the dwelling that we could put in. And the reason we're thinking about this is for the reasons that many people have brought up. We don't need a three-bedroom house anymore. Two kids graduated from college, they can't afford to live here. We could build a smaller place, move in, and one or both of our kids could live there. However, we can't live in a shoebox either, so starting with a small house and then being limited to the lesser of 500 square feet or 30% of our small house would make it very tiny. I'm in favor of this amendment.
Thank you. John?
Given that we struck down Article B, what residential districts does Article C apply to?
We would be, we would be, we would be amending the table if this is approved, and we have the zoning map to vote when it comes to Article E. So it would be on the zoning map.
Yes, sir. On page 21, the main motion amended it by adding that the Town of Rockport zoning bylaw, Article 5, B1, Line E, be amended to delete the words, provided the minimum lot area required in zoning, in zoning district where the lot is located is provided in each dwelling on the lot, and to permit as of right one accessory dwelling unit per lot in the R, A, R, S, M, R, G, and D zoning districts.
Okay, so I move to amend that line.
There's already amendment on the floor.
Okay. I can oppose the amendment after that.
Yeah, to the amendment. Okay, I sense we are ready to vote on the amendment to Article C, which replaces the word whichever is less to whichever is greater. Does everyone understand what they're, what we're voting on? Okay, this is what we are voting on. A detached accessory dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 250 square feet and a maximum of 900 square feet or 40% of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater. That's the amendment. Does everyone understand? Okay? All of those in favor of changing the language from less to greater, press A. All those up. It's, it's an amendment. We're going to close the polling? Nobody got, a lot of people didn't get to vote. What is it? Yes. Okay, Jason has something to add. One minute, please. The polling is closed. We will start again.
The amendment, the amendment is to try to change the language, which now says detachment, a detached accessory dwelling unit shall be a minimum of 200 square feet and a maximum of 900 square feet or 40% of the total gross floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is less. The amendment was to change it to whichever is greater. However, if you take 40% of the principal dwelling, let's see, what's 40%, what principal dwelling would it be? A 2,300-square-foot principal dwelling, 40% of that is 900 square feet. Okay, that's the maximum that you can do under this, under the proposed bylaw as is written. Okay, 900. If you have a, a principal dwelling that is, let's say, 500 square feet, okay, that means if you do 40%, 5,000 square feet, you could, you could build an, under the amendment, you could build a 2,000-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. That's not an accessory dwelling unit. 2,000 square feet is huge. So that's why it says 900 is the max, or 40%, whichever is less. Not, right now, it would allow a way bigger accessory dwelling unit under the amendment that's being proposed. That's all.
What happened? It's not, okay, sorry. Sorry that happened. I thought that was clear. I thought somebody else had already brought that up. So we're going to go back, and we're going to start the vote again. All of those who are in favor of the amendment, do you understand now that you are voting to change the language from less to greater? If you want it to go from less to greater, press A. Starting. One. A. Start. If you're opposed and you want it to stay exactly as it is, press 2 or B. This is how this started with you.
One more time?
One more time. A. This is all at the same time. Press A for yes, B for no. Starting. We ready? Ready? Now, same thing. Press A for yes, B for no. There you go. There's your vote. I declare that the motion has failed 14% to 86%. Back to the main motion, Article C. Any discussion on Article C? One minute. In the back.
Elizabeth Brooks, 44 Long Beach.
Speak right into the microphone, so we can hear you.
Elizabeth Brooks, 44 Long Beach, Unit 3. I have a question about, well, I have several questions, but the first one, a more pressing one to me, is water and sewer. This town has a huge issue, has, in the 80s, if anyone's lived here in the 80s, we had a water shortage, where they don't serve water. You had to take, limit your water. And I want to know if the planning board has taken that in consideration, because a very property has this AUD built. How is the town going to support the water and the sewer? I'm not against affordable housing. I don't think this option is affordable housing, but I would like, has the planning board discussed this with the DPW? Has the town discussed this?
Do we have a representative from the DPW? Is there anyone here that can speak for the Department of Public Works? Jim Gardner? Jim Gardner is a board of the, is on the Board of Commissioners? Jim? You're the Board of Commissioners? Okay. Jason is answering for the Board of Commissioners, because he's already spoke to them.
Yeah, I spoke with Jim Gardner. I read the Kleinfelder Report, which was 2019. Rockport has, has a problem, but it's a problem that's being remedied, which is infiltration from rainwater getting into the sewers. And that is being remedied by an ongoing program of what they call INI, infiltration prevention for keeping the rainwater from getting in to the sewer and having it treated like wastewater. That's the biggest problem Rockport has right now. That's the problem they're working on right now. The planning board cannot plan based on what the future will hold for the INI for the sewer system. We can't adopt zoning amendments with that uncertainty going forward. The Kleinfelder Report, which is the report that was issued in 2019, said there was capacity for additional housing and development, including a, the TOVOD, which we haven't even talked about yet. A more recent, very recent report said we, town really has to work on its INI to keep ahead of any future development. So where does that leave us? It leaves us to the point where if, if there's a problem with the sewer capacity in the town, then the town can do what it has done in the past, which is it, it imposes a moratorium on future connections to the sewer. And it has done that, and it can do that in the future. But in terms of the zoning and changes, we can't rely on what happens with the DPW department. We have to go forward with the zoning. We have to understand that additional connections are going to be made in the future, and if that poses a problem, then it's up to the wastewater people to say, hey, look, we got a problem with additional connections. Let's put future building permits on hold until we resolve this problem. That's, that's the way it happens, but it's not us making that decision. We can do the plans, we can plan for the future, and we can do something like these ADUs to allow an incremental increase in the occupancy of people who want more affordable housing. I hope that answers your question.
I does, I have a follow-up, though. So if you...
The people we have to hear from, so I'm sorry, but we can't have a conversation. We're going to hear from everybody that wants to talk. Is there somebody in the back? Yes, okay. Then we'll go over this way.
Yep. Leslie Peterman from 22 President Street. I had a additional comment based upon Elizabeth's question and related to the water aspects. Adding more housing to our community, in the past four or five years, we've had water bans every year because we haven't had enough water to support our community as a whole. How does adding more water support that, I mean, more housing support our needs as a community currently?
Can you state that again a little bit more slowly and right into the microphone, and I'm going to ask our sound system people to help us with this problem?
In the past few years, we've had many...
In the past few years, we've had many water bans during the summer where we are not allowed to use water on our own properties to maintain our gardens and feed our families. I would like to know how adding more houses where more consumption is going on will enable our communities to thrive as we would like it to be.
Okay, so a similar question as the sewer. Now to water.
Hi, Jim Gardner. I'm one of the DPW Commissioners. We have been looking at the issue of water and sewer in town. And we've actually hired a consultant to take a look at this for us. We have a fair amount of data, which we actually just got on Friday, probably too much data to present here. And I agree with Jason. What's happening with our water and our sewer really shouldn't impact what we're thinking about here, primarily because our water and our sewer issues are fairly severe and we are going to have to face them irrespective of whether or not we choose to encourage more development or not. So, you know, it's work that needs to be done. From a water perspective, sorry, did I just lose the mic? No, there we go. From a water perspective, we've seen a real increase in the drawdown of raw water from our water sources recently. We suspect that may be because of COVID for the last two years with people staying home, but it's been a little surprising because it's more than we anticipated. So, and we have a very leaky system in the water. Our water system is leaky and we're having trouble correlating what's going on at the plant with the metering that's going on in houses and businesses. So we seem to be missing water from the system. We're looking at that. We're trying to figure out where the water is going and why, and also why we're drawing down the raw water so much. On the sewer side, we have also a leaky system where we get groundwater. After it rains and the ground becomes saturated, the sewer system can literally be overwhelmed with inflow and infiltration, which will push our discharge levels beyond what's permitted. Okay? And this has been going on for years. It's a very complicated process because we need to, actually, we, we run cameras up and down the sewers trying to find leaks and then we try to fix those leaks, but a lot of the leaks may actually be coming from laterals, which are the connections from the houses to the sewer. And those laterals are on private property, so there's not a lot we can do about them. Either way, though, we have a lot of work to do. We have a lot of work to do on the water side. We have a lot of work to do on the sewer side. And the work needs to be done just to handle the current population irrespective of any sort of additional population from development. Okay? Once we do do the work, and it has to be done, we will have the capacity to handle more development. But it is, right now, the situation with the town is we've got a very leaky and old water system that needs a lot of attention, and we've got a leaky and old sewer system that also needs a lot of attention.
We'll get to everybody.
So just verifying with Town Council, sorry. We've moved principal permitted uses and structures, line E, has been moved to Article C. Correct? I move to amend that line and make SRAA and SR districts a Y, in other words, by right, so that it's equal to all of the other districts in Rockport.
Okay, you've heard the motion. We'll get it on the screen for you in a moment. But if I understand it correctly, it's the table of principal uses dealing with accessory dwelling units, which we have magically moved to discussion with this article, Article C. And if I understand it correctly, all of the districts are going to be a Y. Is that correct? Oh, wow. Okay. Does everybody understand that? And does everybody know that we are going to now only talk about that amendment? So I want to hear in your discussion, talk about that issue only for, until we resolve this. Everybody got that? Okay. So now, we'll start this way. We'll start with Alan.
Quickly, really quickly. The Board of Appeals was in, were in favor of special permits across the board, every district. We, we don't, we feel like that there should be hearings for every one of them. So we'd not, we're not, we would not be in favor of Ys across the entire town. That sounds silly to me.
Short answer, let that be a model for everybody. That was good.
I concur with Mr. Battistelli. What they're asking you to do is to say that no matter where you are in town, your neighbor can do what they want by right and you have no notice, even in the avenues and in the South End, downtown, everywhere. I would, I would be against this amendment. I think that everyone should have a right to what is going on in their neighborhood. And I think everybody should be allowed a public hearing and be able to understand what's going to go in next to them across town, not just in a few places. Everyone should have a special permit.
All right. Let's hear from people we haven't heard from. Zooming around. Okay, no. Okay. Then it sounds like we might be ready to vote.
Again, the application of this is that if ADUs are good for Rockport, they're good for everybody in Rockport. And we don't want to unintentionally create forces that will cause more speculation and more gentrification of our town, of people trying to buy up properties in SR and SRAA because they don't get to have their housing density increase in their neighborhood. If this is good for us, it's good for all of us. Thank you.
All right. You have heard this amendment. If you want to change that table so that they're all Ys, then you are going to vote one or A on your clicker. If you are opposed to that and want to keep that table as it presently exists, you're going to, in the article, you're going to press two or B. Any questions on that? Isn't this drama wonderful? Oh, that motion failed 122 to 105. So the table stays as it is and we continue discussion of the article. And we're getting close to a vote, I just sense it.
This is really quick. I'm Lauren Himmel, 60 Main Street, and I would like to propose that that same line be changed to all special permit.
Did you second that, Melanie? Okay, moved and seconded. Now, that line, it's like an I chart. As we're changing it, let's discuss it. Anybody want to discuss that? Yes?
Didn't that just gut the whole thing? I don't, I do not understand how that would possibly work, who would do it, what's the process?
It probably changes a lot.
It changes a lot. It's a, it's a Trojan horse for defeating the, the motion.
So first of all, because Article B failed, there is no special permit by the planning board because that was part of Article B. So by making this a special permit across the board, it would be a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. However, if this article, I mean, I'm sorry, if this amendment passes and every district requires a special permit, the quantum of vote goes back up to two-thirds.
So the amendment to be by 50%?
The amendment would be by 50%. It is an amendment, which is 50%.
Did that clarify things, everybody?
The amendment is a majority. It's a majority. The, if the amendment passes and every district requires a special permit, the Housing Choice Act no longer kicks in because you do not have an ADU by right in any district. So therefore, the article to pass would need a two-thirds vote.
I'm sorry, but it's still confusing to me. Isn't this just saying there's no ADU option?
Right, but if I understand the law, the law changes zoning to a majority vote if there are ADUs by right in some zoning districts. So right now, it, there is an ADU by right in the general district, in the downtown district. So if you take that away and have everything going to need a special permit, then that new law does not apply. And so this whole thing, this Article C for Charlie, requires a two-thirds majority. The amendment only requires a simple majority. Are there questions? Yes? As to what this means? I'm seeing this, I don't-
I was really briefed before, Lauren Himmel, so maybe I should just elaborate a little more. We have accessory dwelling units in Rockport now. You can have one. Anyone in this room, Laurie said, sorry, another person said that they were considering it. So this is not about do we have them or don't we? It's how we go about getting them and whether they're by right and your neighbors get to know and they get to weigh in, or whether you, you have to go through the process we all go through now. Okay? So it's not like you can't have an ADU if we have special permits for everyone. We're leveling the playing field across town. You still go before the board, you still make your case, and you still have restrictions, which may not be codified and spelled out, one size fits all. It depends on your neighbor's feelings, what you need, and maybe you could put something a little bigger proportional to what you've got if you're living in a postage stamp already. So that's what I just wanted to clarify. It's not, doesn't gut all of ADU. It just changes how we authorize them. Or rather, it keeps it a lot the way we have it now without giving everybody the right to build without input from their butters.
I think, if I'm correct, please correct me-
Just make sure everyone states their name.
Jane O'Malley, 63 Pigeon Hill Street.
Oh, I know you.
Hi, Bob. Could someone from the planning board address this? Because I believe what she just presented on then changes the whole thing and they can be short-term rentals then. Is that correct? So that's a major difference here if we don't want more Airbnbs in town. We're here for year-round wonderful housing to make Rockport a livable place for a lot of people. So hopefully we don't do that.
It's my understanding that the amendment is only to change the use chart. So Article C, in its entirety, will be presented except for the one change to the use chart. So that will not mean that short-term rentals are available. As far as I can read, the, the actual article doesn't allow for that, and that has not been amended.
Any other questions on this I chart?
Helen Barnett, 27 Haven Avenue. I just want to be very clear what I'm voting on.
Can you get right up to that microphone?
I want to be very clear what I'm voting on. I would be voting on all of Article C, but I would also be saying that it has to apply to every single district in town and that by voting this amendment in, it changes Article C in a way that it would need a two-thirds vote to pass. Am I correct?
I believe you.
You're super close. The only, and, and the only thing, you said that, the way that you phrased it indicated that these would be allowed in as of right and that, that's not. They would be allowed in every zoning district by special permit.
By special permit.
Everything else you said was correct.
I, I, I understood it was all by special permit. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other comments, questions, observations? This is just now changing the chart to require a special permit now in every district. Yep, anybody else? I want to hear from people that haven't spoken. All right, let's vote on this, shall we? Yes. Okay, Sarah?
Hello? Oh, it does. Sarah Wilkinson, Board of Selectmen. So I'm confused if it switches to special permit for all the districts in town instead of by right, then what would, and it would be the zoning board that obviously would give the special permit. Sorry. I'm, I'm confused about then what, what the zoning board would review, like what, what would they give the special permit on, basically?
The rest of Article C would survive. If, if Article C gets a two-thirds vote, if this passed, then Article C needs two-thirds. If it passes, all the rest of that language is there, except that you need a special permit in every district. So probably if there's language that says you can do it of right, that language would have to go away.
So they would probably be all of the same standards as the planning board has proposed?
So, yes, they would. However, because it is a special permit, then we would then, the special permit section would then kick in and a special permit review would, would kick in, which is essentially the standard is not more detrimental to the neighborhood. So that would be an added review that the zoning board would take in because that's already in the zoning bylaw right now. Yes, that was, I, I are, I did, I did opine on that, Mr. Battistelli, because it's my opinion that because Article B failed, there is now no longer anything called SPPB.
All right, we're voting now just on this amendment. I, I got to get you in the microphone, so we, we want to pick this up for posterity. So just state your name and say it.
Amy Seabrook. Does this gut in the planning? Okay, let me just ask the question. Can the- Can the Planning Board speak at this time, please? Oh.
They don't want to.
Okay.
So, you know, we should explain to them that by making amendments on the floor, you run into problems.
Yeah, but I mean, some of the technical things we can fix with the saving language in the law, where the town clerk can fix things that are inconsistent.
Do you want to talk?
I mean, I'm trying to get him to say that by making these amendments on the floor, it's, they're causing big problems.
Those of you that want to know what we're talking about at the sidebar, there's a legal term that begins with cluster, and we're just working through that right now.
So making amendments on town meeting floor is very, very difficult. We've done, I can't even, I think I lost count as to how many amendments we have been attempted on town meeting floor tonight. But by doing the amendment that is presented in front of us right now to just change the use chart, we are going to have confusing language. We have language in here that, you know, states special permit by the Planning Board. You know, so again, you know, you have the right to make amendments. I'm not saying that you don't have the right to make amendments, but by making amendments on town meeting floor, it's very dangerous and we run into bylaws that have conflicting language that somebody has to determine which language is correct. And sometimes that takes a court to do that. So that's what we were discussing.
All right. I want to hear from people I haven't heard from on this issue in the back.
Mr. Moderator, Monica Lawton, 11th Story Street. Council has just basically said what I was going to say. This process is becoming very messy, sloppy, and dangerous in terms of creating good bylaws. The Planning Board put months and months of effort into this. We're putting 15 minutes into it. And if we don't like what they've done, vote it down and then there will be opportunity to go through a more considered process. But trying to write this on the fly is not going to serve any of us very well. I think we should move on to vote on the question or the motion as presented. Thank you.
I think in that spirit, I sense you're ready to vote. So we're going to vote on this amendment if the amendment in Article C is to take that chart and make everything, every zoning district, a special permit. It does create problems. We'll deal with those problems, I guess. But if you want to do that, you're going to press 1 on this clicker. If you don't want to do that, you're going to press 2 on this clicker. Starting now. Okay. That motion failed. We're now left with the chart as it was at the beginning of this discussion about a month ago. And we have Article C. Looks to me like you're ready to vote on Article C. Because we rejected that last amendment, it only requires a majority to vote for Article C. If you want to adopt Article C, you're going to press 1 on your clicker. If you don't, you're going to press 2 on your clicker. Starting now. The motion carries. It was kind of close. 116 to 114? Yeah, that's what it says. We move on now to Article D. D. Vindelta.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article D be approved as printed in the May 16, 2022, special town meeting warrant, and further that the town clerk be authorized to make any and all ministerial changes, including but not limited to grammar, punctuation, and corrections to the codification and numbering to ensure correctness. Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals support this article.
It starts at page 129, and it requires a majority vote.
Yikes. This should be much less controversial. What this does, it creates a new section in the zoning law called the Open Space Residential District. It applies only to subdivisions in the town. It doesn't apply anywhere else. And what it does is this. Right now, under the law in Rockport, there's a subdivision law called the Open Space Residential District. It already exists. However, it is, what it is, is open space residential is the idea that you're going to take a conventional subdivision with all the cookie cutter lots and the cul-de-sacs and the front lawns and all the open space used up. And what you're going to do is turn that into what's called the conservation subdivision, where the houses are closer to one another, but there's much more open space around the houses that can be used for recreational purposes. It can be used for agricultural purposes. It can be used for no purposes. But it preserves the open space around the, in the subdivision. Right now, an open space residential subdivision is a very difficult proposition in the town of Rockport. The reason it's difficult is because an open space, to do that, you have to get an open space residential development. You have to get a special permit from the Planning Board to do that. You can do a conventional subdivision with the cookie cutter lots and the cul-de-sacs and the big front green lawns. You can do that as of right. You don't need permission from anybody. You just have to follow the rules for how big your lots are, and you can do that. But to do an open space residential subdivision now, you've got to go through a really long, cumbersome process. So in effect, the current law discourages developers from doing open space residential subdivisions and encourages them to do a conventional subdivision. Because why would you do an open space residential subdivision and go through that whole process when you can do a regular subdivision and not have any of that to deal with? So what the new proposed Article D does, it turns that on its head. Now, an open space residential development with the open space that conserved areas, the houses that are close, now that you can do under the new law as of right. In other words, the process has been streamlined. You still have to follow all kinds of rules and regulations, but you do it as of right. And now, under the new law, it would be the conventional subdivision that would require a special permit. So what we're doing is essentially changing the priorities for an open space residential development. We are trying to encourage, if someone's going to subdivide in the town of Rockport, we're trying to encourage an open space residential development as opposed to a conventional development. It doesn't prohibit someone from doing a conventional development. It just says if you do a conventional development, you've got to get a special permit. That's basically it. Doesn't seem to be controversial. But it allows a developer who's sitting there and trying to make the choice, which way should I go? It allows them to do an open space residential development much easier. And that's to the benefit of everybody in the community. Not only the people who may live, ultimately live in the subdivision, but also to the people who are living in the community because it makes for a nicer community. And I'm not going to spend any more time talking about it. There are lots of things in the law. You can read them. There's lots of detail. But that's basically what this proposed bylaw does. Thank you.
We hear from the public. I'm going to ask the zoning board if they want to weigh in.
No. We voted yes. The Board of Appeals unanimously voted yes on this.
Okay. All right. Now, we started this side last night. We'll start on this side. We'll go around. Yes, ma'am.
So essentially, Terry Rosello, Four Summit. So essentially, this proposal is exactly asking for what you're going to screw us on, on that train development section. So you want all the open space and very careful development in green space, and then in one section of town, you're essentially going to jam it.
Let's be civil. Okay. Anyone else? All right. We'll go around from the outside in.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. I just have a few questions about what constitutes the difference between an open space residential development and a reserve for parkland that used to be stipulated for every so many acres under development. Is that better, folks? Terribly sorry. With an open space residential development, I'd like to understand who is in charge of the maintenance of the open space? And is it available to the community? Or is it only available to the residents proximate to the development? The old way of doing this was that if a developer came in and did a subdivision, towns could stipulate that they had to develop so much parkland. That way, the town was aware of what they were going to be paying for maintenance going forward. I don't understand who is going to own the maintenance on the open area once developed. I don't understand if it will be available for everyone in the town to use or if some homeowner association decides to do an open plan, that means they get their own private tennis courts. I don't understand. Please clarify.
Let's let the Planning Board speak to that.
So what exactly was the question? Who's going to maintain it?
Right.
Yeah. This isn't public parkland. We're not talking about that. And if you read this section, starting on page 134, 134, and you go to 134, 135, and on page 136, there are detailed provisions about ownership, which will be, could be in various forms. Could be a homeowner's association. Could be deed-restricted property and maintenance. It's all there in the law. And I, you know, we've all been here a long time. It's very readable, but it's not, it's not parkland for, you know, the town to have to maintain. This is all private ownership. Same as private ownership would be in a conventional subdivision. Everybody owns their lot. And people have homeowner's associations with conventional subdivisions to maintain the common areas. This is the same thing, except the common areas are going to be green areas and not just roads and sewers and things like that. Does that answer your question? Yeah, I think it's all there. It's very well detailed and thought out.
Toby. And then we'll hear from the gentleman in the back.
There's a pen. Toby Arsenean, 95 Granite Street. All very detailed and thought out. I beg to differ. We already have an open space subdivision. It's been on the books for 10 years, if not 15. An earlier version of the Planning Board, totally different membership, put a great deal of effort into it. And when this edition of the Planning Board decided to suit the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and the glorious governor, that they would rewrite it, they did not bother to consult with the previous members of the Planning Board who came up with the first edition. Jason Shaw believes that no one has come forward to build any such subdivision because the present regulations are onerous and difficult. That is his interpretation of it. And of course, any of us could speculate or guess. The more likely reason why nobody has built an open space subdivision is because it's not what the market calls for. People who have money to invest to build such things, look to the people who will buy them. And people want larger houses on larger lots. So so far, there are no such subdivisions, and it's unlikely in future that there will be. You also have to ask yourself whether you want to encourage people to carve up what little is left of the town's woods. That's another reason why none of these things have been built. What open space is left is largely either ledge or a long way from roads, or it's swamp. So it's not readily developable. Also, if you've read the details, if you will turn to page 131, where it says housing types, there's a prime example of American gibberish. Okay? Duplexes will be considered as two residential dwelling units. Single-family structures, or duplexes, will be located on individual lots. Multiple-unit arrangements on a shared lot or a combination of individual lots and shared multiple-unit lots may be allocated, allotted by special permit in cases where such arrangements best serve the conservation purposes of this bylaw or on the specific parcel. Now, I defy anyone to tell you what that means. And if you go on, there is no minimum lot area, which should lead you to be suspicious. There ought to be a minimum lot area. They say that that will be largely governed by the disposition of utilities and sewage arrangements, but they botched the sewage arrangements. It says here, this is again on page 131, six, infrastructure, the last sentence. To minimize environmental impacts where practicable, residential units shall have shared or clustered septic systems. Well, if you've bothered to read through the zoning code on page 44, which we just left in place when we rejected Article B, it says that you will only have septic systems on the lot that they pertain to. So if we pass it, we've set up what Town Council was warning you against, a direct conflict. Then we go on about the setbacks. You're required 100 feet from a public road. If you actually want to encourage these, then that's asking for more than is necessary. There's nothing supposedly poisonous about them that you would want them well off a public road. We're not talking about a pigsty. But you require 30 feet from a subdivision road. But you require 30 feet from a subdivision road. Does that make any sense? And also, you require 100 feet from a butter's building. Well, if you're going to make a terrible stink, maybe you do need 100 feet. Supposedly, we aren't creating a terrible stink. Anyway, if you go on from there, we're also encouraging, in the part that Charles Peterman asked about, the open space, which is not public open space, we're going to encourage both agriculture and wildlife corridors, but the two conflict. If you're going to encourage agriculture, you need fences, which are going to block the wildlife corridors. They're both good causes, probably you can't have both. We're saying that you can have barns, which might be lovely buildings, or they might be eyesores, on up to five percent of the so-called open space. Now, barns may be desirable, but it's dishonest to call them open space. And going on, on page 134, we talk about allowing, and this is G on 134, "Purposefully introducing or allowing the introduction of species of plants and animals recognized by the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs to pose a substantial risk of being an invasive or otherwise detrimental to the native plant and animal species and plant communities on the property." Well, if you go on from there, you're not to introduce these things, you'll find under maintenance, under O, that we're now on page 136, O2, enforcement of maintenance standards, that the planning board can take out liens on people's property if they don't keep down the invasive species, and pursue them in court. Well, there are indeed such things as invasive species, and there is also such a thing as invasive government, of which this would be a prime example.
Toby, can you wrap it up?
Yes. What you've got before you is a total mess, and we've got a perfectly good open-space residential development regulation on the books. You'd better consider rejecting this one and leaving what we've got. And if you don't like it, you should go to the planning board and ask them to try again.
If you'd only started with that. Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Jim Johnson, 63 Broadway. Couple of questions. Since we had all that discussion about accessory dwellings, and the fact that if we passed it, it changed the vote from two-thirds to a majority vote, are this article and the next article 50% because we now have accepted? It seemed like all of a sudden, we were into it. So will this article only require a majority vote? I didn't hear you, Mr. Moderator, if you had.
Yeah, both of these require majority votes. I will let Town Council explain why, but I have a sense it's because of that new law.
Correct. The Housing Choice states, they made a change to General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, and one of them, one of the changes states, "An amendment to a zoning ordinance or bylaw to allow any of the following as of right," and subsection C, "is open-space residential development." So that is a simple majority.
Mr. Moderator. People may have come to this meeting tonight expecting that these types of articles, because they're zoning, would have required a two-thirds majority. And yet, during the meeting, it changes, because we made a vote that was just recorded at 116 to 114. People were leaving this room.
You're actually incorrect. These are separate, these three articles.
Yep.
And the vote of the previous one has nothing to do with the vote on this. This is, as Town Council just read, because there's been a change to the zoning law in general, the statute, this one is by majority. And the next one, because it's transit, is another section that is by majority. So they, it didn't rely on.
It had nothing to do with accepting of a, okay, because that seemed to be something we were talking about.
It is what it is.
Yeah. It's, I think that it's a terrible situation, that there's been a lot of discussion back and forth, good discussion, a lot of work was presented by people. But this room really is much, and I'm not suggesting any kind of quorum call, because I don't think the quorum matters anymore, but it just seems as though we've lost a lot of the people who are here for a purpose, to vote for one of the articles, and, you know, now, now we're going, the state legislature has made it easier for these articles to pass, and I'm just really disappointed in it. Not in you, sir, or any of the people here.
No.
But I'm disappointed in our legislature.
Yeah, that's the state law that governs us. Oftentimes, people stay for their favorite article, and then they leave, so, in the words of the coach, "It is what it is."
I'll talk about, first of all, the two-thirds majority versus majority vote. We've had these articles, before they were even articles, we've had them posted on our website, and, and public hearings, and it's been made very clear for months that there are certain articles that are going to be majority, and other, one article, the one that was voted down, that was going to be two-thirds. So this should not be a surprise to anybody. In terms of Toby's attack on this open-space residential subdivision law, I take issue with a couple of things. First of all, I don't think, as far as I know, Mr. Arsenean is, he does a lot of gardening, but he's not a real estate expert, and I, and to get up here and say that a developer would not do this is really inappropriate, I think, because it's exactly why we're making this change, is because it makes it easier for a developer to do an open-space residential development, which is better for everybody. Does everyone want to see subdivisions with their cookie-cutter lots and cul-de-sacs? You're going to all be happy with that? Or are we going to try to make it easier for someone to do a development where there's conserved open space, where houses are closer together? I don't think so. And, you know, we had, we had public hearings on this, and I believe they were attended by a lot of people, including Mr. Arsenean. Everyone was fine with the language that we had in here, because in fact, the language is good. And, you know, as someone who's practiced law for many years, I can say the language is good and readable, and if you read anything out loud and fast, it's going to make it sound like it's unintelligible. But it's not. What is unintelligible is the existing open-space residential law, which is an absolute disaster. And to urge this group of people to keep that law would be a travesty. It's a disaster. And by the way, we did speak with former planning board members. We spoke with one who you know, Eric Hutchins, and he applauded this change that we're offering now. And he may have been one of the ones who was on the planning board when the first open-space residential development law was adopted. So it's unfair to the planning board and to the community to get up here and go through this and act like it was put together haphazardly. This was well thought out. It was held, public hearings were held, comments were held, were taken, and comments were acknowledged. And it would be something I would think that this community would want to change. There's nothing, we're not doing anything different, except we're changing some of the language, and we're changing the emphasis. We're trying to make open-space residential developments more, something that's more desirable to do. And we hope that people maybe have read some of this, because you should read it on your own and see what it says, because that's the important thing. No one's trying to jam anything down anybody's throat. And this is something that we all should want. Thank you.
Alan McMillan, 18th Story Street, Pigeon Cove. A question for the planning board. On page, let's see, what is it? Page 132? I'm sorry, page 131, under L, dimensional requirements, down below that, it says, number six, infrastructure. The last sentence of that says, "To minimize environmental impacts where practicable residential units shall have shared or clustered septic systems." Previously, on page 43, excuse me, page 44, under H, septic systems, it says, quote, "On-site sewage system shall be on the lot on which the building is serviced by the system is located. An on-site sewage system servicing more than one lot is prohibited." Which way is it going to be? One of your items says it's prohibited, and another one says that's what they want you to do. Could we have some clarification, since we're voting on contradictory sentences? Thank you.
What's it going to be, boy?
Yeah, "To minimize environmental impacts where practicable residential units shall have shared or clustered septic systems." So this provision for open-space residential would, for this use only, in our view, would supersede the general provision about septic systems. But don't forget, it says "where practicable." So this isn't something that has to be done. It's, it's a situation where it's practicable. And answering your question in another way, can this be, can we go back and revisit this and tweak the language, not so much in the open space, but in the other provision that you referred to, and refer specifically to this section? Yeah, we could do that, and we probably should do that. But right now, there's not an inconsistency, because this is a very specific provision that's pertaining to open-space residential developments only. So I hope that answers your question.
Tom Delaney, 70 Eden Road. Will this open the door to communities with security gates and private police? Other words, gated communities I see all over South Florida?
Will we become Brentwood?
Absolutely not. It has nothing, it has nothing to do with a gated community. You can have a gated community today in a regular subdivision in Rockport, okay? This, this has nothing to do with that. That's a, that's a security and access issue. This only has to do with how this subdivision is going to look, and how it's going to use the natural resources of our community. That's what this is about, and that's only what it's about.
Gentleman in the back.
Hi, Dan O'Donnell at 52 Main Street. Would those, I'm trying to remember the name of the, the additional units that people can put in, that we discussed in section C, would they apply to this open-space development? If someone said, "I, we have an open-space development," then, then they want to add on small units, or is that mutually exclusive?
The quick answer from Town Council is, depending upon what zoning district they're in, then yes, ADUs could apply. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
This warrant was 157 pages long. It was posted on April 29th, and essentially, 10 days later, 10 short days later, we were asked to vote on these things. It does seem like it's very ambitious, considering there's 157 pages to go through. It probably would have been a better strategy to go through several parts of this zoning, to make it more sensible, more legible, and apparently, there's been a lot of controversy already about some of the wording. So there's, I have a great deal of questions about it. And the other thing that bothers me with this is, first of all, there's some so-called laws bouncing around about Tovar, or whatever, and also this changing of voting from two-thirds to 50%. And we're not, there's a lot of questions about whether it's even legal. I submitted last week a memorandum, legal memorandum, from Attorney Walsh to the town to review it, because I had some consideration. There was a lot of questions that was posed in this memorandum, as far as the legality of it. One was, number one, there's a home rule amendment that was put in place, I believe in 1965, which simply states that Rockport has total rights over their zoning. No other agency, state or federal, has any other rights. All right? And right now, we're trying to comply to something that the state is trying to get rights over, which they really don't have a right to.
Order, please? Yeah, we're, we're just talking about open space. We're not talking about other things. So we want to be relevant and move on.
It's a 50% vote, is it not?
It is. It's the state law.
You know what I'm saying? It's not a state law. That's what I'm saying. So that's why it's pertinent.
Well, if you come over and talk to Town Council, we can show you the law.
I've seen the law.
Okay.
But doesn't mean it's legal.
Well, I don't think we can adjudicate the legality of the statute here, so please, address, please.
I don't claim to be a lawyer. I'm just pointing some things out.
We're talking about open space, so please address your comments to the pending question.
I am. There's a 50% vote versus a two-thirds vote, which again, is questionable whether it's valid or not. The, the state, the MBTA zoning laws are impacting on this, and it has not been published in the Massachusetts Registry by the State Secretary of State. This has not happened. The state is still receiving commentary. There's no downside to saying no to this, to any of these things. So truthfully, you guys have the right to control your, your town. The state does not have the right to control your town, unless you give it up. And by giving it up, complying with what they request. So I just want to point that out, and if you don't buy it, you don't buy it, but like I said, I submitted the memorandum to the town for their review. I would expect them to at least acknowledge, acknowledge it, or present some of the facts, or rebuttal. But Attorney Walsh is a very sharp individual. He knows the law very well, and... And am I wrapping up? Okay. Good enough. I said my piece.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else want to talk about the pending question? All right. You have... All right, you have heard the motion. All those in favor of adopting Article D are going to press 1. If you're not in favor, you're going to press 2. This requires a majority vote under state law. So, ready? Vote. Looks like the motion carries. 132 to 57. 70% would have passed either way. We move on to the final article, Article E.
Mr. Moderator, Planning Board Chair Jason Shaw moves that Article E be approved as printed in the May 16th, 2022 special town meeting warrant, that the town of Rockport zoning map be amended, and further that the town clerk be authorized to make any and all ministerial changes, including but not limited to grammar, punctuation, and corrections to the codification and numbering to ensure correctness. Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, and Zoning Board of Appeals support this article.
Moved and seconded, this is on page 137 of your booklet. It requires a majority vote. Yep. If you want to leave, please do so quietly. Got a lot going on tonight.
Okay, I'm going to make this quick as I can. Transit-oriented village overlay district warrant Article E. Melanie, you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Okay. This is a new Section 12 of the zoning bylaws. This is kind of like the ADUs and the open space residential development. This is one of the provisions that's been a priority of the Baker Administration, but not just the Baker Administration. It's the entire legislature in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The purpose of the new Section 12 is to provide the option of multifamily market rate affordable housing within one-half mile of the Rockport train station. Rockport is designated by the Commonwealth as an MBTA community, and allowing multifamily housing around its train station is a requirement. Now, let me just stop you right there, and I'll say it three times, because someone probably will miss it. We are not doing this because anybody in Boston is telling us to do it. We are doing this because we, as the planning board, believe it would be good for the town of Rockport. There's no mandate that we do it. We're not concerned that we're going to lose anything if we don't do it. Just to make that clear. This allows mixed-use development around the train station, so residents can easily use public transportation and avoid using cars. People can commute. They can go from their apartment to the train, take the train down the line to Beverly, Salem, Boston, and come back that way, and not have to drive, and not have to congest our highways with more cars. And anybody who's driven between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. knows what that's like. It allows for different types of houses. Townhomes, mixed-use development, and multifamily. So the district, it's, it's a clean slate. In other words, there's no development that's being mandated for there that has to look a certain way. All there are are certain guidelines that have to be followed. This is what's called an overlay district, and this is extremely important to understand what that means. The underlying zoning, most of you probably don't know, but that the underlying zoning around the train station is not commercial, despite all the commercial buildings there. The zoning is residential, single-family residential. Well, you can see that the development around the train station has nothing to do with what the zoning is. In fact, every single commercial use around the train station is what is called a non-conforming use, because it's commercial. So it's a crazy, untenable situation. But the existing residential zoning district, we would, it wouldn't change by this TOVOD. This is an overlay district. Basically, it gives a property owner the option of doing multifamily housing or continuing with the current zoning with, which is residential. They can do either or, they can mix them, they can do whatever they want. This is just giving an option. The design standards that we have developed with the help of MAPC create the look of a historic New England community. There are height restrictions. There are restrictions that make buildings be closer to the sidewalks, like the old-fashioned buildings were. These are all in the, they're all built into the overlay district. And obviously, not so much around the train station, but it preserves open space and protects watersheds. And by the way, there, there is watershed district right behind the train station. If you go south, it's, it's protected watershed. Can we go to the next slide? Here are, and this is important too, the TOVOD is not a development proposal. This is, we are not proposing a development. There is no developer who is proposing a development. It's simply a template to allow a property owner in this area to do, to develop their property in this manner, should they choose to do that. They have to be work, a developer would have to work with the existing landowners. The existing landowners could say, "We don't want to do anything," and it's going to stay exactly the same as it is now. That's, that's an option. But it provides the opportunity to do something if someone wants to take it. There's some diagrams in this slide. Very hard to see, very hard to see from this screen, but I know you have individual screens back there, too. These give you an idea, this is again, this is not a development, of what it could look like, what a development like this could look like, okay? Two and a half stories maximum. The window requirements, I don't know exactly what that means, I'll have to ask Chris Kuschel about that. Zero percent, oh, percent window requirements, I'm sorry. Traditional roof lines, meaning no flat roofs, we're going to have pitched roofs. Open space requirements, meaning there has to be open space separation between these buildings. If you go, if you go to, the best example in town that I can think of, if you go to Lower Broadway, across from the school, which is not a school anymore, but across from the school, you see those, what used to be, I guess they were worker housing? That's very close to what someone could do if they wanted to in this particular location. That is your traditional Rockport architecture, and that's what we're talking about here. Okay. This, this is a map. It's, it's very hard to see here, but it has an outline of where this TOVOD would be. And if you can see it, it, it goes north, hits Summit Street, goes to Railroad, it goes to Railroad Avenue on, it would be the west side of Railroad, and then to the south a bit, and to the east a bit. But it's only 12.3 acres. We have not, some, we have not, we have told the Baker Administration, because they've solicited comments about their guidelines, which have an absurd amount of acreage that has to be multifamily housing, 50 acres, 25 contiguous acres of the 50. We've told them, "We can't do that in Rockport, and we won't do that in Rockport." So again, I repeat, we are not doing this because anybody is telling us to. We're doing this because we hope that this multifamily housing, which will be a minimum of 15 units per acre, minimum, and mixed-use apartments above, stores below, and commercial below, will provide additional housing to people who can't afford single-family homes. It will provide decent housing to people who can't afford single-family homes. And hopefully, it'll be a model for the communities along, if it's ever done, and it may never be done, but if it's done, it will be a model for the communities up and down the MBTA line. People bring up, I'll just say enough, people can bring up water and sewer, "Oh, will there be enough water or enough sewer?" That will be something that we will address when and if, when and if, a proposal ever comes to us if this TOVOD is adopted. It doesn't have to be addressed now, because it's not an issue now, but it may be an issue later. And if it is, it'll be addressed later. And it may require that a project that is proposed for this station be scaled back, or for a time, not done at all, until the water or sewer situation is corrected. We understand that. But we, this is a start to allowing development in an area that sorely needs it, and sorely needs this kind of housing. And you know what? It's going to be kind of nice. If it's done right, it's going to be a nice development. And if you look at the, the law, and look at the, the examples of how this thing would look, it's going to look a lot like the communities that we have now in Rockport that have been here a long time. So, that's pretty much it. Is there any, that's, is that the last slide? Oh, this is what it's not going to look like. That's why it's there. Okay? It's not going to look like that. That's not what we want in Rockport. And that, that, this is a map, it'll be impossible for you to see, but basically, it's the entire town map with the TOVOD zone in a little area right around the train station in white. Very hard to see on this scale, but we just have to show it, to show kind of where it will be. Okay? That's all, I'm sure everyone's going to have a lot to say, but that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Before we hear from the public, anything from the zoning board? No? Okay. Now let's hear from the public. We have some people in the back, let's hear from them, and then we'll work our way forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Linda Medits, 98 Main Street. I hope you can hear me well. There's a bigger picture here than has been communicated to you, because has been somewhat sort of in a foggy way acknowledged, is that while it is true there has been interest in this type of district for some time in town, the ante has been upped by passage of law in January, with language inserted requiring that MBTA communities follow certain formulas to determine what kind of housing options be provided within one-half mile of a train station, if you have one in your town, or if you're in an adjacent town, or you have a bus line, various formulas apply. I have a vested interest in this, because depending on where you start with your compass, I'm within a half mile of the train station. I have a lot to think about beside water, sewer. I have traffic. I know what it's like on a sunny Saturday to pull out of my driveway right now. And so let me just tell you what the formula is for an MBTA community like our own. What the state is asking for is we count all of our housing units, which are 3,600. We multiply that by 15%, which comes up to 540 multifamily dwelling units by right within a 50-mile acre, half-mile radius of the train station. Now, Mr. Shaw is correct that this is physically impossible. In fact, he communicated with the state in a letter dated March 22nd, and I quote, "This 12.3 overlay district, which will be voted on at May 16 special town meeting, would create a new multifamily mixed commercial residential district. According to MAPC, the district would allow for up to 160 new residential units, and these would allow for as-of-right construction." It's also true that the land in this parcel is not currently for sale, and there is sort of no way to know when that may happen. But I am extremely anxious for all the reasons I've described, plus others I won't take the time to describe, at the thought of anything approximating this. But that number has been communicated to the state as something that MAPC, involved in helping us determine our zoning, thinks is feasible and possible. If we have a creaky old water system, a creaky old sewer system, traffic issues, two bridges that get you to this island, how can we possibly add 160 multifamily units within half a mile of the train station? Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hi, Jane O'Malley, 63, Pigeon Hills Street. I, I, I love what the planning board did in terms of, they spent a lot of time trying to get the dimensions and density and the look of the place. And my concern is the 40B, which is still alive and well in Massachusetts. And we've had member of the zoning board and the Board of Selectmen proposed a 40B on the top of Great Hill, which we were fortunately able to, you know, it didn't happen, and that was in 2005. So it's not these developers from afar we're worried about, it's people here who might jump all over this and see this as an invitation. And my concern, because I love what the planning board did, and if that was just based on that, I think it'd be great aesthetically and whatever, but they can, can they come in and just, you know, ignore all the, override the dimensions proposed? That's one question. The other, is it truly affordable? I'm hearing all sorts of things. Thought I knew what this was about, and now I'm not so sure lately, because what I'm hearing is it's, you know, market rate, all that, and we need affordable housing, we don't need any more other housing. The other question, and my final question, is will residents have first dibs on this? Because I'm also hearing mixed information on that, and to me, if they don't, we don't need that, because we, we are, we're losing our residents, and we need residents to stay. I think residents have a right to be near their families. I have a disabled family member who needs to be near me. Gloucester has, and has told me that he'll never get a house. He's been on the list in Rockport and Gloucester for years, and he will never get an apartment in Gloucester, because people from out of town now have precedent over that. And he's And he's a 67-year-old Rockport resident, lifelong resident of Cape Anne. So, Rockport, we've not gotten anywhere either for housing. So I know that's a different entity, that's the Housing Authority, but how will we, how will this be answered? I'd been told before by the planning board that this is a premature question, but I think it's a necessary question, that I don't like to not know, to vote on this and not know the answer to these things. Thank you.
So it seems that it's violently agreed upon that we need affordable housing. That's great. Affordable housing, as defined by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is subsidized housing. So for example, the Harbor Light project that's going to go on Granite Street will be subsidized housing. If the entity that is developing this affordable housing accepts state or federal money, by law, they have to allow anyone to apply. So they can't limit who applies to just Rockport or Gloucester residents. What we're talking about, and what I, I guess I didn't make clear enough when I was speaking, the housing choice law is not an affordable housing law. The purpose of the law is to increase the stock of housing in the hopes that costs will come down over time. But it's not going to happen with one development or two developments. So Toby's right, whoever builds this, should it happen, will have the right to charge market rate rents. I will say that in a development of this size, in the zoning bylaws is something called the housing balance requirement. So 10% of this development, should it happen, would have to be allocated as affordable units.
Yes, sir.
Peter Souza, 18 Oakland Ave. Do you mind if I pick up the microphone?
No. How are you? Good to see you.
It was going to be hard otherwise. My question might be more related to the minutia of planning, but in these new multi-unit buildings, is there the requirement to adhere to the ADA regulation, or does that in any way conflict because of the fact that there's sort of like, like you were saying, we're trying to maintain particular types of, you know, the look of a building or things like that? I just want to, I just had a question as to whether or not they would be more accessible to people, because we have such an aging population.
First time we've seen eye to eye, actually.
Maybe not the last. Thank you.
He needs the tall answer.
Short, you want the long one or the short one? The short answer is yes, it has to comply with the Massachusetts Building Code and all ADA units. You can still have that compliance and have the look of an historic area. They're not inconsistent. And it's done all over, and I know Chris Kushel can cite examples of where it has been done. Thank you for your question.
I prefer the short answer. Thank you. Alan. And then we'll do this side.
Alan McMillan, 18-story street, Pigeon Cove. I'm here to address the four giant elephants in the room that most of you aren't thinking about, because for two years, we've had peace and quiet and I, disclaimer, I'm a retired locomotive engineer. I used to drive the noise-making machines. Each one of them, the locomotive weighs 140 tons, there's four of them stored overnight in Rockport, and I don't need to tell anyone who lives next to the train station what that noise means. And the MBTA, which came here in 1998 promising that they would reduce the noise, put some kind of sound baffling or sound-reducing mechanisms on the locomotives, that never happened. I don't tell you what MBTA stands for, other than more money being thrown away. It's truly an unfortunate situation that the 12 acres that these gentlemen have mentioned around the train station were the end of the line for the railroad. Four trains get stored overnight here, and it has never addressed the issue of the noise. The MBTA has said all kinds of things about what they would do, nothing is happening. This is an incredibly inappropriate place to put housing next to the tracks. There's already a lot of noise down there, it is totally inappropriate, it is an industrial area. If you're in Manchester, Hamilton, Ipswich, whatever, the trains simply pass through and there's a little bit of noise. But in Rockport, it starts at 4:00 in the morning and it doesn't shut down until 1:30 a.m., so there's maybe three and a half hours of peace for the people who live around there. I really think the town needs to do a lot of consideration, both about reducing the noise, and you're going to have an incredibly hard time with the MBTA, which is, it's like the Rock of Gibraltar, they're immovable on this subject, but just consider that. This location for any kind of housing is totally inappropriate, and it will not happen until a noise issue is addressed. Now, it has been mentioned, just move the trains out of town, store them somewhere else. There is no other place else. The entire stretch from Rockport to Gloucester is watershed for both Gloucester's water supply, which Gloucester does own property in Rockport as part of their water supply, and Rockport's water supply. So again, this whole thing is a moot question, it's totally inappropriate, and I think the planning board needs to really reconsider this, no matter what the state says. Thank you for listening.
Okay, right there on the edge, sir. It looks like green. Yes. Is that green? That green shirt? Yeah. Green shirt, yeah.
Nathaniel Mulcahy, 17 Dean Road. I'm wildly in favor of more housing. I love public transport, this might be an excuse to electrify the rails finally. Yes, we have a shortage of water, yes, we have a problem with sewage, but the question that nobody seems to ask is, looking at the map there, isn't 80% of that property owned by Mr. Smith? Has anybody had a comment of what Mr. Smith has said about the property that we're about to rule on? If we're voting on something which is 80% owned by Mr. Smith, I think I'd like to know what Mr. Smith says about this.
All right, right over here, then we're going to go back. Toby will get you, don't worry.
I'm not Mr. Smith, sorry. Charmaine Blanchard, 16 and a half King Street. I live about a block from this proposal, and I've read through the paperwork, the article at length, and I've got some questions. 15 units per acre is what they're proposing, 12.3 acres, a minimum of 180 residences, is how I come up with the math, and there's nothing in this that says that this has to be owner-occupied. So Airbnb's, VRBO's have at it. You're one block from the beach. Secondly, if we were not to vote this in, I heard Mr. Shaw say that this is actually residential, and it's non-conforming pre-existing use for industrial. If a developer were to come in, provided that the owner sold it, and it stayed as residential, would we have 180 units? I don't know that we'd have 180 residences if they're single-family residential. It's a lot, it's a lot of people, and it's going to change the town, good or bad, irrevocably.
Okay, let's go in the back, and then we'll come around, and then we'll get.
Hi, Diane Vella, 17 King Street, right across the street. I'm wildly in favor of this. When I came to Rockport, I did not want to live in an assisted living community. I wanted to live in a culturally diverse, vibrant community that has multi-generations, and we don't have that here. This is a long-term project. It's not going to change overnight. All of the exaggerations are the farthest out for whether it would happen or not happen, that we have an opportunity as a community to come together and solve all these problems. They're solvable if we work together and create the kind of community that I want to live in.
Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yep.
Barbara Kaplan, 4 Ocean Avenue in the Pigeon Cove section. I lived here for 35 years, and I don't presume to be a native, I learned that right away, but I've grown to love and care about Rockport and the caring community that we are. This opportunity is an opportunity to potentially create housing, that families can come in. You talk about not wanting 180 people. In the census, in 10 years, Rockport increased by 40 people. We don't have a sustainable town if we don't have families and people with children. We are, we are so wealthy and rich in our beautiful, beautiful community. I want to share that bounty with families who can't afford to buy the wonderful houses. When I came here, there were children lined up in the Cove for the bus. There were mothers and fathers walking their babies. Now I walk around my neighborhood, there aren't even people. There are houses that are second homes, vacation homes, and that's okay, those people have a right. But is that what we want our community to be? It is not what I want our community to be. I want it to be multigenerational, multi-ethnic, multiracial, multi-economic. These are the people that bring rich things to us. Who do we want to be? Do we want to be a wealthy community that keeps others out? I don't think most of us really do, if you really think about it. The world is becoming multicultural. Why can't our community at least have potential to build homes for people who can't afford single families? Right now, you're either wealthy, or you inherited a home from your family, which is a blessed thing, but very few of us can do that. So please, just vote the potential of creating housing, like we did with the ADUs, even though it was a slim thing. It's a potential for creating housing that people can come in and live in and enjoy the bounties of this beautiful, caring town of Rockport.
Yes, Z Sappola, 92 Granite Street. I really am curious, having some knowledge of the town's history and zoning. I know we didn't have any zoning at all up until about the end of World War II, and then it was the, the thought of the planning board that came into existence in the late 1940s. We didn't have a planning board either during World War II, that said that we would have to plan for enhancing growth and so on, and people that would want to come here. And I'm sure that in that train station area, J. Raymond Smith's lumberyard and their lumber building, and the railroad station, and the freight shed, and the derrick that took stuff to the tool company, the steel, that was all there before zoning ever came into existence in that area. So it really surprises me, and I think I'm bringing this up, because earlier tonight, Toby asked about having some sort of a mechanism by which we could tell in years in the future when certain proposals came into law, how valuable it would be. Because it seems to me that it's ridiculous that the town would have said that that's a residential area. And if they did, perhaps they did, but I get a suspicion that it was after, it had originally been some other zone. Anyway, that's not the real point. My problem is, is that coming from Pigeon Cove, I see another huge development. I used to joke with people that I worked with in the eastern United States, that I was a training coordinator in Boston, and they used to ask me, is there any time of the day that you're ever in a good mood? And I said, no, because I said, I have to drive here 40 miles to get here, and if you drive on 128, 40 miles in the morning, you're in a bad mood at 6:30 in the morning. I find now, that I'm retired, I'm in a bad mood just driving over to the town transfer station. And I think that having to go through enhanced development there, it may be fine if, if you can prohibit vehicular traffic, and that it works out like, yes, everybody just sits there, goes to whatever, the hot dog place, and gets a hot dog, and then gets on the train and goes to work and comes back. But I suspect there'll be a lot more cars there contributing to more traffic and delaying things at five corners, if it's possible, but even worse. So my feeling is, anything that this town does to attract more population, it should be done on all, on every zoning district, not just one cluster where, you know, we already probably, well, I wouldn't call it economically great, but something. Thank you.
Sure.
Charles Peterman, 22 Pleasant Street. While I appreciate the sentiments around the idea that we'd be opening up the town to lower-income people, this stipulation, this plan has nothing to do with that. Everything that's been proposed says that we're starting with market rates, correct? I see this as a wave of institutional investors who currently own about 18, who currently own about 18% of the housing stock in Massachusetts, further upping the ante for Rockport. I don't see any prohibitions that maintain the income requirements on this. I see a large number of our houses absent and, empty during the winters or being staged for presentation. We have a problem with institutional investors, and no one is addressing any limitations on wealth purchasing houses as an institutional investment, when we want them to be used as residences within our community. So all the things that we do that compromise our own ownership of house, or put us under potentially additional tax burden, as the house next door to us converts into 15 units of condos, what does that do to your tax burden if you own the single-family that's next door? There's a large window here that seems to be benefiting an institutional investor who isn't present to vote in this situation, and I'm curious why none of our plans address the top level, but instead put the burden on the homeowner who is currently here. Thank you.
You know, Terry Rosello, 4 Summit, and I live within steps, like two of the other speakers. If you look around at our people on the planning board, our Board of Selectmen, not one of them is in any way proximate to this area, and yet we hear a lot about what a great advancement this is. We've been undersold on the whole cost of these projects. The Kleinfelder report that came out several years ago has already told us that we are, have problems with our sewage, our water. We know the infrastructure of the town is in dire need of major improvements. We're sitting in a building of a school that is at least 50 years old, and I'm sure at some point, they will come to us for more money, and no one is addressing how this is going to be cared for, taken care of, and how we're going to be taxed for it. The idea that this is already available for housing sort of underestimates, well, if it's such a great idea, why doesn't the current owner do it? Well, there's not enough money in it probably for a single family, and who the hell wants to live next to a train that is full of pollution? So I think that, I strongly oppose this proposal, and I think that the idea that we're going to do some social justice kind of project here, it really is creating an illusion.
After John.
Toby Arsenian, 95 Granite Street. Apparently, many... Apparently, many people are kind-hearted or at any rate afflicted with consciences and want some affordable housing. But it is wishful thinking and not the truth to suppose that this would turn into anything affordable. Anyone who spends millions of dollars to buy up the numerous small lots and build such housing will intend to make as much money as possible. So, market-rate housing. And what does that mean? It means structures like those that sprang up by the Upper Circle in Gloucester, by market baskets, halliards, I believe it's called. That is 200 units. Here, we could have, Charmaine said, 180. Those are four stories high. What would be authorized here is 38 feet, which the Planning Board somehow calls two and a half stories. 38 feet, call it what you like, is three stories in full headed towards four. Mention was made by Jason Shaw of The Water, that we would cross that bridge when we come to it and deal with it when it happened. That's not the way it works. You can't simply say that you're not going to provide the sewer and water. You haven't that choice. I'd ask Town Council to confirm what I say. The town is obliged to provide sewer and water services, and you can't simply declare a moratorium. That requires permission from the state. I'd like confirmation on that. And you don't get permission unless you've got plans to solve the problem. When Jim Gardner tells you that we're committed to spending money on the I and I, that's the sewage problems anyway, that's the truth. It was a million at the last town meeting and 5 million over the past five years, and that's going to go on. But we don't want to bring the whole card castle down on us. When we commissioned the first of those studies back in 2018, we were told by the DPW commissioners that if all of the properties that were legally entitled to connect to the sewer were built on and did so, we'd used up all of the sewage capacity. Things haven't improved since. Every connection to the sewer or the water, we're spending capital. Both of those are finite abilities, and you don't want to be building a new sewage treatment plant. That would take a lot more than kind sentiments. It would be ruined financially for many people who can afford to live here now.
You know, it's, it's hard to answer when people, when one person says there's going to be so much noise at this location, it's going to be impossible for anybody to live there, and then somebody else gets up and says that this is going to be used for Airbnb units, and investors are going to buy them to make a profit. You know, let's just address a couple of those things really quickly. First of all, I don't know about you, but I've seen plenty of instances where developments are protected from noise by noise attenuation barriers. You can go down six-lane highways in Los Angeles, and you'll see barriers there to keep the noise down. There's noise attenuation with trees, or noise attenuation with structures, there's noise attenuation with housing placement. And, you know, no developer is going to build housing units in a place where people aren't going to want to live. And believe me, they are going to take into account the issue of the noise from the trains, which, by the way, as I understand, eventually are going to be electrified, which of course will take care of all of that noise issue. Second thing is, it's not 180 units, because of the 12.3 acres, it's not going to be all filled with housing. I mean, the housing is going to occupy a portion of that. A portion of that's going to be open space. A portion of that's going to be sidewalks. A portion of that's going to be green space. So that's why we projected, and this is a projection only, that the maximum, M-A-X, maximum number of houses that could be there would be 140, not 180, okay? And that's what was in the letter that I wrote, someone read that a letter that I wrote to the state, objecting to their requirements that we provide more housing around the train station than we did. Lastly, I just want to repeat what the latest, the Kleinfelder report said about the sewer and water, is that there's capacity there, it has to be used carefully, and they even took into account, this is back in 2019, we've been talking about this since 2018. The Kleinfelder report, which were consultants hired by the town for a lot of money, came up and said that this, this development could be constructed, in their report. So, I, you know, there are, there are a lot of ways, there are a lot of reasons to say no to everything, but the bottom line is, we see housing around train stations up and down the line. If you go down to Salem, what do you see at that train station? There's housing all over the place, right around it. And, you know, people want to live next to train stations. There's housing being built in Beverly, near the train station. People want to have that ability to go from their houses without automobiles to get to the train and go to work. And that's what's being allowed here for people to do. But again, you know, there are all kinds of reasons why one can say you shouldn't do it, but look at what's there now. It's a half-empty parking lot with marginally occupied stores, and that's never going to change unless we do something to make, give someone an incentive to change it.
Ray Cahill, Haven Avenue. I'd just like to request that we consider moving the question, please?
Move the question.
Let's, sure, if we can move the question, please.
Okay, moving the question, non-debatable, takes a 2/3 vote. So if you want to move the question and go right to the vote on the merits, you're going to press 1. And if you want to keep talking about this, you're going to press 2. Everybody understand that? This is moving the question. We are going to vote right now. I believe that's more than 2/3, 150 to 22, and the percentage is 87%. So now, that means we are going to vote on this article. Take your handy-dandy clicker. 1 will be yes, and 2 will be no, and a majority wins this question. The motion carries, 89 to 83. The Chair will entertain a motion right now to end this meeting. Moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you.